Mary. All right, I would like to welcome everybody here this evening and appreciate all the engagement. This is wonderful. We are convened as the Loveland City Council Regular Meeting. We start our meetings off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask everyone who is able to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and Lynn will let you take the attendance report.
Madam Mayor, there are nine members present.
Thank you. We have two proclamations tonight. The first one is for Arbor Day. Jeff Caputo will be accepting the proclamation. Councilor Mallow will be reading the proclamation. And Jeff, you probably have other people with you. So go ahead, Councilor Mallow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas Arbor Day is now absorbed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas the city of Loveland has been designated as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas trees provide numerous environmental benefits: cut, heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, enhancing the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautifying our community. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of Loveland, do hereby proclaim May 6, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Loveland, and encourage the citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and urban forests, to learn more about trees, and to support our city's urban forestry program. Signed, the second day of May, 2023, Jackie Marsh.
So where's Jeff and company? And we have Platte River Power here as well, who donate trees, generously donate trees to the city annually. Councilor Olson, are you going to be able to take a photo, or do we need to assign that to somebody else?
I'm going to find somebody else.
Okay, who wants to be the photo taker? Um... (laughing). He's very tall. And Jeff, do you want to say a few words, and Jason as well?
No, I'm not. Yeah, I'll stay with the photographers.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Mr. Adams. Thank you for your time this evening and for this proclamation. This year, we celebrate Arbor Day on Saturday, May the 6th, and we will also be celebrating our 34th consecutive Tree City USA Award. To be recognized as a Tree City, Loveland has met the high standards set forth by the Arbor Day Foundation, one of which includes having an ordinance related to trees and their care. We'd like to specifically acknowledge you for your support by passing revisions to strengthen our tree ordinance last year. These changes will provide long-term benefits to our residents and raise the standards of care for trees in Loveland. This proclamation also celebrates citywide tree planting. With that in mind, I'd like to acknowledge the many city staff that contribute to our urban forestry program. We are grateful for their collaborative efforts. They include parks, public works, water and power, our city attorneys and city clerks, and the development center. To celebrate Arbor Day this year, we have combined festivities for a single day this Saturday at Mahaffey Park. Volunteers will start off in the morning by planting trees in our lower orchards. Shortly afterwards, Sweetheart Racing will be putting on the run for the trees. Funds from this race will benefit tree planting in Loveland throughout the year. And finally, we'll finish our activity with our ceremonial tree planting around 1:00 PM and hope to see some of you there. All our Arbor Day plantings on Saturday and several tree plantings throughout the year are being funded by a donation this year from Platte River Power Authority. We're joined tonight by their CEO. If you'd like to stand.
He's the other way.
Is that behind me?
(laughing).
Thank you, Jason.
He's holding up the wall.
And also, thank you, Akari. We're grateful for the donations that goes back to 2020, 2001, and we're very appreciative for their continued support of our program. So we'd just like to thank you for your continued support with this proclamation, and we look forward to future Arbor Day celebrations and continuing to grow and diversify our urban forests here in Loveland. Since it's almost May the 4th, I'd just like to close by saying, may the forest be with you all, and thank you, and hopefully see some of you this weekend.
Thank you, Jeff. Jason, do you want to say a few words?
This will be my shortest presentation of this council. I'll just say, on behalf of all the employees of Platte River, our 50th year anniversary, it's my privilege to be here tonight to thank you all for all of your support, and we're proud to donate to this. We're doing it in all four cities this year. We do it every year, and I want to go on record, I hope this is being recorded, I promise the mayor that next year we'll get a really, really big tree in the park that provides shade, so look forward to that next year. Thank you.
And we're talking about Willow Bend Park, which will be the first universally accessible playground in Loveland, so thank you. Thank you. All right, I'm going to clap.[392.14][392.17](laughing). All right, our second and last proclamation is National Library Week. Amy Phillips and crew are receiving, and Councilor Ball is reading the proclamation.
Two of my favorite things, trees and libraries. Proclamation, whereas the Loveland Public Library supports free and open access to programs, books, computers, and other resources for all members of our community, and whereas the library provides the tools to assist people to find, evaluate, and use information for their jobs, health, housing, education, and other needs, and whereas the library provides trusted, safe spaces, and is an ideal institution to bring people together to learn, grow, and explore ideas, and whereas the library supplies technology, access, and training for people to apply for jobs and obtain crucial education and life-changing opportunities as part of the 21st century workforce, and whereas the library offers access to online homework assistance and specialized databases to help students of all ages bridge the learning gap and reach their school and career goals, and whereas the library collaborates with a wide range of community partners to offer programs, services, and support for members of the Loveland community, and whereas the library seeks to remove barriers to access to serve all of the Loveland community, and whereas the library strives to reflect diversity in our collections, programs, services, and staff, now, therefore, we, the City Council of Loveland, do hereby honor the library for their work during National Library Week and throughout the year. In the city of Loveland, and encourage all citizens to visit the library and explore what's new at your library and connect with the library team. Because of our library staff and the public who use it, the Loveland Public Library informs, inspires, and engages. Signed, the second day of May, 2023, Jackie Marsh, Mayor.
Amy and crew, and I guess we have counselor. You're going to take photos again? Okay, you're ready.[538.82][538.85](laughing). Okay. I'm so used to being Olson. All right, Amy.
Mayor Marsh, councilmen, and councilwomen, I want to thank you for honoring the library. This was delayed a week, so we had a fabulous celebration last week. We were creamed at trivia, and then we had a great movie shown called "The Public," looking at how we're community center. I know for the 600 people who walk through our doors on a daily basis that we are one of the essential services for Loveland. We offer much more than just books, movies, and things. For people, we're a lifeline for technology, for skills. For our teens, we offer a safe space after school where they know that they can come, be enriched with STEM and other maker activities, and for our children, they get a head start with literacy skills to be ready for pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. So we thank you for honoring what we do and for looking at us today, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy and crew.[652.62][652.65](laughing). All right, so that ends our proclamations. City Attorney, would you remind us of our rules on cell phones at our dais?
Madam Mayor, I'll look that up so I can respond specifically, but what I can tell you generally is that they're not to be used other than except in, you know...
An emergency. Okay, thank you. All right, we move on to public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak to an item, including any resolutions that are on the regular agenda section of the agenda, may address the council at this time. Comments on ordinances that are included on the regular agenda must wait until we get to that item. Any member of the public may request that an item on the consent agenda labeled as quasi-judicial be placed on the regular agenda for discussion and public comment or testimony. Public comment is intended to provide citizens with an opportunity to address counsel directly. We encourage speakers to give public comment in a matter that promotes civil discourse. Generally, counsel will not respond to public comment other than to seek clarification of the matter raised and defer such matter to the city manager for review and resolution. So at this time, we had... I'm doing public comment. Is your, whatever you have your light on for, is it about public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
What's that? Oh, thank you, I can do that closer for there. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move to dislodge council member comments or questions to anyone during and in response to general public comment. That leaves in the exception that this does not address council members' comments or questions during the public comment portion of the regular agenda items.
On a second. All right, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please. Olson?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Overcash?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Mallow?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the vote was nine to zero. Thank you, the motion passes. We are going to start with our... I'm doing public comment. If you have something that is related to public comment, we'll hear that now, otherwise it can wait until we get to the item you wish to address. Is this about public comment?
I'll wait till public.
Thank you. All right, we need to, okay, you haven't started the clock yet, that's good. We're going to start with the people in chambers. We're going to start with the people in chambers who signed up in advance are here. So the first speaker is George, and I can never say your name, so I'm not going to attempt to.
I have a hard time with the two.[831.82][831.85](laughing).
After a lifetime, huh?
George Carrkl, Loveland, Colorado. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I expect that tonight you'll be hearing many public comments regarding the pending decision that you, for you creating a new URA plan in the city of Loveland, and I choose not to address that issue. I would rather focus on you, the elected officials, that are expected to look out for the best interests of Loveland's citizens. I was taught at an early age that the primary and fundamental responsibility of local government is quite simple. It's to provide the necessities that ensure a safe and stable environment for the citizens that they are chosen to serve. There are obvious parts to this: infrastructure that includes power, transportation, water, streets, police and fire departments that protect all citizens, and public education. All of these are basic needs for everyone in a municipality. An inherent fiduciary responsibility is careful management of the revenue that citizens provide to the city through the taxes that they pay. This, of course, includes careful management of future revenue streams of taxes that will determine the viability of the city to function in the near and long term. The city's tax coffers are not unlike a bank's assets, and just like a bank has a board of directors, cities have councils that have a similar function. Imagine the rigorous steps that a bank would have to take when approached by someone who wants to access the bank's assets. The request would be thoroughly vetted to protect the stakeholders from harm. You have a similar fiduciary duty to protect the citizens' tax coffers. They are the stakeholders that you have sworn to serve as elected officials. Your primary and fundamental duty is to the citizens of Loveland, not to any special interest. You have an obligation to be open, honest, and accountable to the public before choosing secrecy requested by some corporate interests that want to do business with the city. When the public asks simple and direct questions and replies or diversions that do not provide real answers, the public has a right to see red flags that indicate a lack of candor and truthfulness. It doesn't take much digging to hear about the current level of mistrust of government at the federal, state, and local levels. How you choose to run Loveland's government and the decisions that you make will determine the level of trust the citizens will have in you. I hope you make decisions wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second is Bob Masaro.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilors. I'm Bob Masaro. I'll not be discussing the URA itself tonight because it's obvious that members of this council will be voting for the new URA pretty much no matter what we say. What I would like to see, do any of you have the courage to consider something different? Many years ago, a past mayor stated, "Loveland is not a destination; therefore, tourism will not grow." The current proposal for Centerra South is the same old, same old: residential, retail, office space, a little open space, and oh yes, a children's museum. I happen to be a fan of the children's museum, but it's not a destination. We have been told this is a development of the future. Remember when the promenade shops were the retail of the future? They went bankrupt. Now there are at least 15 empty spaces. Do we really need more retail? Let's think outside the box. Let's do something different. Two successful enterprises come to mind: Colonial Williamsburg and Old Bethpage Restoration Village. The Bethpage Village depicts life in a village set in the late 1980s, 1800s rather. An attraction like this would bring people from, not only from Loveland, but surrounding towns, folks from up and down the Front Range, visitors heading to and from Rocky Mountain National Park. It could include a venue for weddings, business meetings, a small demonstration for educational opportunities on how life was when we were off the grid, jobs and volunteer opportunities for the residents of Loveland. There would be more revenue for hotels, restaurants, and galleries. A free shuttle to downtown would help local business. This is a true win for everyone. Loveland would now be a destination. There is enough land to support this facility in Centerra South, especially if the parcel of land to the east is included. Construction jobs would be created, and ongoing jobs would be needed to staff such a facility. What will it take to make this happen? Well, it's simple: five members of this council to have the courage to hit the pause for two weeks or four weeks. Have an economic development team look at this idea that could have a significant change in how Loveland moves in the future. So what will you do tonight? Take the easy vote and vote for the same old, same old houses and retail? Or delay the vote and look towards the future of Loveland and actually take a serious look at doing something different that will put Loveland on the map as a forward-looking community that celebrates the past? This parcel of land adjacent I-25 and Highway 34 to Rocky Mountain National Park is an opportunity that will not come again. So what will you do? Start something grand? Or kill it tonight with your vote to create a new URA, thus sealing the fate of that property for 25 years? Sadly, I'm afraid we all know the answer to that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Olivia Lowe is our next speaker.
Olivia Lowe, Ward 2. The city sent out a press release that announced happily that the McGwinis were giving up their surface rights to the property, and we're supposed to celebrate that. Perhaps the city doesn't understand the difference between surface rights and mineral rights, or maybe you think we don't, I don't know, but surface rights are subservient to mineral rights. And if you look at the Colorado law, in Colorado, it's common for surface rights and mineral rights to be severed and owned by different people. As the mineral estate is the dominant estate, the surface owner must accommodate the mineral owner by providing a reasonable amount of surface to be used for oil and gas. So relinquishing those surface rights did absolutely nothing. Many of the people behind me will say, "Who doesn't want a Whole Foods? Who doesn't want a children's museum? What's wrong with you, you animals?" I support the development, okay? I worked at the Denver Children's Museum in the exhibit department for 10 years. Children's museums are amazing, of course we want that. I do not want it being funded by a URA. And there are several counselors on this dais that took time out of their day to drive to our state capitol and lobby for a developer. The day you did that, you stopped being our counselors, and you turned into lobbyists. That is not what we elected you for. And one has to wonder what makes you so beholden to one developer? That is very suspicious. And as my father would always say, "Sometimes the best deal is the one you walk away from." Thank you.
Thank you. Aggie Chestain?
Madam Mayor, may I have a point of personal privilege? Aggie?
Thank you.
Last night, or last week, I mispronounced your name.
Yep.
I thought I had heard Aggie.
I understand. It was just joking.
I apologize, so I just want to take that time.
No apology needed, just a little joke in the paper, thank you. I'm strongly opposed to the new URA. It was Nancy Pelosi who said, "We have to pass the bill so you, you can know what is in it." Sadly, sadly, it is more obvious to me every day that Centerra URA, private-public partnerships, are much the same. The majority of our council members have behaved rushed, as though they've been sucked by powerful forces into frenzied, almost hysterical state, sucked into an endless growth at all-cost game to divert public money into corporate welfare, financial mechanisms that extend for years. Only nine citizens in this room or anywhere else in Loveland are allowed to make that decision. The rest of us are just left to trust them, trust that there was true transparency and that due diligence was exercised to protect the public's hard-earned dollars. Trust, trust you, that the revenue projections made by the developer and the consultant funded by the developer for the city to hire will prove true. Several weeks ago, while walking downtown from the library, a man across the street in a wheelchair waved to my husband, "Could you come across the street? Could you help push me out of the heaves in the sidewalk?" Heaves in sidewalks that are all over this downtown that supposedly you're proud of? Shame on you. Who knows? Maybe someday, the people that I actually supported on the street with signs that I regret having supported now, maybe they could expend a little bit of their effort to prioritize fixing what truthfully and legitimately should be designated blighted are downtown sidewalks. Do you think? Nah.
Thank you. Linda Rosa is our next speaker.
Good evening, Linda Rosa, Ward 2. I oppose the URA resolution. Councilor Vogel has insinuated that Senate Bill 273 was rushed inappropriately through the legislature, but as a housekeeping bill merely clarifying the intent of an older bill, it was allowed late-bill status, and it followed protocol. What we have tonight is an example of a real rush deal and one that doesn't follow protocol. The problems include: number one, council did not comply with the proper notice sign of a public hearing for today, and there's no mention of a public hearing in the agenda. Number two, the Loveland Urban Renewal Authority has not yet voted on recommending the Centerra South URA plan to council. Number three, plans for fracking are confused and misleading. Four, the Loveland Planning Commission rejected Centerra South Development Plan, which you really should pay attention to. Number five, Laramo County has until mid-May to give an answer about the inclusion of agricultural land. Number six, Centerra South has an 18-page final plan attached to Resolution 50, mostly just asserting the compliance with city and county comprehensive plans, and does that despite having no traffic study. And number seven, the School District IGA is illegal. That document states in Section 217, quote, "The school district increment shall be paid directly to the school district by the Laramo County Treasurer." That is not allowed by URA law. But the Centerra South plan attached to the proposed resolution tonight correctly cites URA law on page 13 under the heading of "Increment Amount," stating that increments shall be paid into a special fund of LURA to pay for the bonds and other indebtedness. There is no allowance for TIFs to be sidetracked before they are deposited in this special fund. There is an allowance made for the developer to pay the county out of a special fund for services necessary to offset the impacts of the project, but all other entities, taxing entities, must negotiate deals with the developer to get paid out of the developer's own pocket. So there are a number of reasons why passing Resolution 50 tonight is premature and could pose difficulties for the city of Loveland and the developer.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Fennice.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and counselors. I'm Jeff Fennice, the Executive Director of the Loveland Housing Authority, and I'm here to express support for the Centerra South project, especially through the lens of affordable housing. I've been up here before to express support, and I won't repeat that, but I will remind you, I think everybody is familiar with the need for affordable housing in Loveland. Just the numbers are overwhelming, and I hear every day, we need to build more. But we are a mission-driven organization, and for us, it's about more than just numbers and just warehousing people. Our mission says that we provide opportunities for home and community through affordable housing. And to be able to do that, a lot of times... And to be able to do that, a lot of times, is dependent on location, quality of housing, and it's rare that we have the opportunity to be involved in a project this early with a for-profit developer, that we actually get to inform the design, we get to pick where we'll be building. It's not just, you know, what lot could we buy? How do we make that one work? It's how do we fit into this community? So it's an excellent opportunity. I would ask that you all consider looking at the project through that lens of affordable housing and the opportunities that it provides. I think this is a model. We do talk to other for-profit developers, and we've frankly never been able to make something work, and we've never had an opportunity like this. So please consider affordable housing when you're considering the project.
Thank you, Jeff. Our next speaker is Nancy Rumfeld.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. Having served as an elected official for one and a half years, I understand that not everyone agrees with my votes or my positions. I must listen to and respect those who disagree with me, share their opinions of me and/or of my positions regarding policy, books, and curriculum. I understand what it's like to be in the super minority and to not receive equal respect, and that I must work harder to garner support by appealing to my fellow board members to seek understanding of what I am proposing. After reading the letter to Governor Polis signed by six of you, I realize how fortunate I am that I do not serve with board members who would publicly insult me by writing a letter to the governor accusing me of using my position to further a vendetta against a private company. Or I'm lucky that I don't serve with a board member who would write an insulting opinion letter, such as the one that a councillor wrote last week. He implied that the mayor and the citizens and elected officials who agree with her are relying on a weak and intellectually dishonest excuse to support their position. While several councillors love to claim that the mayor's behavior leaves a black mark on the city and causes businesses to steer clear of Loveland, I would respectfully suggest that they look at their own behavior first. I personally have experienced demeaning and condescending conversations with two of you who feel justified in your efforts to bully me into agreement because your obsession with gaining power and status overrides normal social standards for common decency and respect. Out of respect, I am not reading your names into the record, but I'm sure you recognize yourself in my words. I encourage several of you on this council to learn the art of respectfully agreeing to disagree with each other and with the voters. Citizens deserve better.
Thank you, Nancy. All right. So we are going to, because, you know, we only have an hour for public comment, and we need to stop the clock. So I'm going to switch to our online, the people that signed up in advance, and then we'll come back to people in chambers. So Adriana, are you with us? Adriana? I think I surprised her.
I think they're having trouble with sound, so I'm not sure she could hear you.
Uh-oh. Well, we have several people signed up by phone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Adriana. We're going, you know, we've done the, people who signed up in advance for in-chamber, in-person. I'm going to switch to the, I think it's one, two, three, four, five that signed up for phone comment, and then we'll take a break and go back to in-person comment, and if we have time, we'll go back to the online. So are you ready for that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I was having technical problems. We do have some folks, user name, user by the name Amy O'Brien.
Okay, so Dave Clark was first, is he there?
Sorry, he is there, Madam Mayor. Hold on one second.
Okay, let's go in order. So I have Dave Clark first, followed by Amy.
Okay. I didn't see her raise hand, but yes, hold on one second. User by the name Dave Clark, please accept this request to become a panelist. Sorry about that.
You're good.
Dave, please turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Okay, is that working now?
Yes, it is.
Sorry, I am not a technology major, any means. Thank you for the time, Council. First of all, I want to start by thanking this City Council of Loveland and the hundreds of city councillors over the past decades who have done marvelous work in supporting this city of Loveland that we all live in. Like Councillor Ball and Councillor Fogel, I've lived in this town for a long time, myself almost 60 years, and have seen a lot of improvements over time. A lot of that is come from the business community. Someone mentioned thinking outside the box. This city has done that many, many times over the years, starting back in the early 1960s, when some business folks got together and flew down to, or out to California to talk to Bill Hewlett and Dave Packard to convince them to build their new HP facility here in Loveland, which was a huge economic boom for the city that we still benefit from. And there have been many other opportunities over the years that the city, council, and staff has worked together to improve our city to the great environment that we have today. We obviously see some of those benefits. Someone mentioned tourism. Tourism over the last several years has dramatically increased here in Loveland. You can tell that by our lodging packs and the number of hotel accommodations and reservations that go on. It's simply amazing to see that the impact that we've had over the years. Loveland is on the map, a lot more than it has in the past, over and over again. This current project, it's Centerra South, is obviously something that's a continuation of what started over about 20 years ago. It's been a plan of that since then. This is just a continuation of that plan. It is a vital part of our growth in Loveland, particularly there on the I-25 entrance into Loveland, and, as we all know, the entrance into Rocky Mountain National Park. Despite the destructive tactics of a few, hopefully this will continue and be able to be a vital part of our community. Just want to again encourage all of you on council to look out for the best interest of Loveland. This is not about a single entity. This is about the future of Loveland, and I, again, thank those who support our future for what you've done. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Our next phone-in is Amy O'Brien.
Amy, please accept this request to become a panelist. Amy, you may turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Thank you, City Council. My name is Amy O'Brien, and I am reading on behalf of Kathy Wright of Live Loveland tonight because she is out of town. So she asked that I read a few words from her op-ed, and now for something completely different, Centerra South. Loveland is a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family. With a strong economy, good schools, safe and friendly neighborhoods, an outdoor lifestyle, and mountain views for days, we are a community that's growing and thriving. We now have an opportunity to grow in a different way with Centerra South, a mixed-use concept south of Highway 34 and west of I-25. I've been following this proposal closely. It's a design for a mixed-use community unlike anything in northern Colorado today. The plans for Centerra South include a mix of housing options priced for a variety of incomes. The new 140-acre community will have comfortably walkable areas with new-to-the-region shops and cafes and a grocery store that East Loveland has been clamoring for for years. It's expected to include office spaces, including a major new employer's second headquarters, employing hundreds in high-paying professional jobs. The Children's Museum of Northern Colorado will be one of the anchors of the space, bringing playful and hands-on learning experiences to families all over. I love that it's purposely designed for gathering spaces and outward experiences. Families leaving soccer games at Loveland Sports Park will be able to walk along new trails to grab a bite to eat. On evenings and weekends, folks from all over Loveland can convene in for live music and other events at the Old McDonnell Farm Bar, reimagined as a performing arts space. Loveland, like other Colorado cities, faces challenges. We need more housing, we need reinvestment and renewal, we must guard against stagnation, we can't stand still. We've got to grow in ways that are smart and healthy for our entire city. If you know me, you know I believe in positivity, participation, and collaboration. McQuinney, the homegrown Loveland developer that has proposed Centerra South, has been evolving its plan based on community feedback. For example, the Loveland Housing Authority is now at the table discussing the potential for an affordable housing partnership at Centerra South, as we just heard. The plan will only get better with more voices at the table. Please, I urge you to support Centerra South. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next phone-in is Jasper Vu, Vu? I guess that's how you say that, Vu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. User by the name Jasper, please accept this request to become a panelist. Jasper, you may turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Hi, folks. Yes, this is Jasper Vu. Hey, I apologize, I don't have my camera today, but I am here to...
Jasper, that's a requirement for giving public comment?
Okay, well, let me, could you skip me and I can go get my camera?
All right.
I'll come back.
We'll move on to Jane Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do see a Jane, I'm not sure if it's Perkins, but Jane, please accept this request to become a panelist. Jane, you may turn on your video and begin your public comment.
That's how much time is left?
That's the time you have left out of the 60 minutes. Right.
Can I, I don't feel like that is possible, because we started our meeting at 6 o'clock. So that, maybe that was a half-hour timer, maybe?
Yeah, because we only gavelled in...
It started with 60 minutes, so I don't know.
We gavelled in at 6:00 PM, and then we did proclamations, which took time, so there's no way. We have only nine minutes left. Well, and we're wasting time now. Do we have Jane Perkins? Jane, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm trying to turn my video on.
We see you and hear you.
Oh, you see me? Okay, wonderful, thank you. This is how I feel, as you know, I've spoken many times before. The McWinnies care nothing for Loveland citizens, and neither do I feel do nine city councillors. They care for the almighty dollar, for turning Loveland citizens, you and I, into their beasts-of-burden donkeys to fund their expensive and unnecessary Centerra South. They care not that they will steal for the next quarter of a century, the books, school lunches, the education dollars, and not just from Loveland schoolchildren, but schoolchildren all over the state of Colorado. McWinnies are, in my opinion, slick con men, taking advantage of Loveland citizens to fund $155 million project for the next 25 years, forcing this without a vote, forcing this against our will, illegally trying to blight farmland. No other city in Colorado allows the McWinnies to suck their citizens dry like Loveland. I would never support something without a contractual commitment in full, in writing. It is a definite red flag that this project is not rid, ready, full of unknown numbers tossed around on financing and, quote, "affordable" housing. Lots of contradictions, a project that is no more than colored pencils on paper, not to mention the horribly, embarrassingly petty antics of certain city councilmen that were trying to smear our exemplary mayor, thank you, Mayor, to the governor, to the legislature, and to Loveland citizens. Dana Foley wants to invest in this glittering new car with all its bells and whistles. Why not invest in our city instead? The blight, the dilapidated roads. City councillors, you don't work for us, you work for shady developers with gobs of money. They pull your strings like puppets, and you've forfeited any remaining public faith, trust, and goodwill. You have failed your constituents abysmally. You have lost integrity with your constituents. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have James Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not see James.
Okay, can we go back to Jasper then and see if he's ready with a camera?
Yes, ma'am. User by the name Jasper, please accept this request to become a panelist. Jasper, you may turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Hi, can you see me?
Yes, we can. Success.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jasper. I am here tonight to read a statement into the record for, from Don Morostica, former Director of the Colorado Office of Economic Development and International Trade, and a former state representative of District 51. That includes the City of Loveland. So let me start there. So this is what he wrote. Loveland's Centerra South would be just the kind of mixed-use community Northern Colorado needs, and one unlike anything that currently exists in the region. Offering a mix of housing options priced for a variety of incomes, the 140-acre Loveland community will also include walkable areas with new-to-the-region shops and cafes and a grocery store that exists, a grocery store that East Loveland residents have been requesting for years. It's also expected to feature office space, including a major new employer's second headquarters that will employ hundreds in high-paying professional jobs. The Children's Museum of Northern Colorado will also be part of the community, bringing hands-on learning experiences to families throughout the entire area. The real estate at Centerra South sits on a major transportation corridor that has been designed for development by the City of Loveland since 1997, and has been zoned for high-density mixed use since 2008. It is in our community's best interest to use the common, proven, and sensible urban renewal tools we have to ensure that this land achieves its highest and best use. So halting a development that will enhance the lives of Northern Colorado residents would be sad and misguided. I hope Loveland City Council will look towards the future, consider what's best for Loveland, amend the existing URA, and adopt a new URA with Centerra South in it. Signed, Don Morostica. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jasper. And we'll go back and see if James Perkins is available.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I still do... I still do not see James.
Okay. All right, we have, let's go ahead and finish up with the online public comment. We have three that came in after the noon deadline, but let's hopefully finish up with those, and then we'll come back to chambers. Lynn St. John?
Yes, ma'am. User by the name Lynn, please accept this request to become a panelist.
Adriana, do we have?
I don't think Ms. St. John is responding. Oh, there she is. Lynn, you may turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Well, can you see me?
Yep, see and hear you.
Okay, I will not be wrong here, I just-
Lynn, go ahead and give us your name and city of residence.
Lynn St. John, Ward 2. It was very embarrassing to see the production that several of you councilors put on down at the Capitol. I hope you're proud of yourselves. You may have won some McQuinney campaign dollars, but you've lost a lot of votes from the residents of Loveland. Also, being as Loveland Housing Authority has officially said they are involved, shouldn't Councilor Fogo recuse himself at this point from this vote? Thank you.
All right, and we'll move on to Jessica Snyder.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jessica, please accept this request to become a panelist. Jessica, you may turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Can you see me or hear me?
Yes, we can both hear and see you.
Okay, good. I've been friends with one of the representatives of the McQuinney company for more than a decade. I haven't not spoken with her since this entire situation has evolved. And I'm only saying that to share that while I disagree completely with the actions of their employer, I understand that she is doing the job she was hired to do. Members of council, the question this evening is whether you will do the job you were hired to do by your employers, the residents of Loveland. That includes me, and the many, many people who have reached out to you to express their concerns, not with development, but with subverting the law to allow a wealthy developer to, again, rob our general fund, our city, and the students across the state of Colorado from money that they deserve and we deserve. It's our money. Members of council, you know the numbers of attainable and affordable housing being promised are not a fact, despite the comment from LHA, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but again, where are the contracts? And if you just learned about this, how were you going to examine that in your vote? You know that giving away surface rights to oil and gas is not, no guarantee of no oil and gas development in or around the proposed area. You know that the cost of living in this proposed area, and in fact, all of Loveland, are not attainable with the jobs that will potentially be provided. I also understand that there is a need for our fire department to access our general fund to ensure that they can in turn provide our entire community with the essential services they provide. I understand we may be looking at a tax increase request from the community to fund this essential service. Can we skip that part? Make sure our city and our fire department are well-funded by our tax dollars before we hand them off to a developer who has not, in fact, done well by our community. I believe that is reasonable, I believe that is right, and I hope you do the right thing, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then Carol Summers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not currently see a Carol Summers.
All right, and James Perkins, did he come back on?
I do not see James Perkins either.
Okay, all right, we're going to go back to in-chamber, and then if we have time, we'll come back to see if there's any people that phoned in after the, we started. All right, I will open up public comment from people inside chambers. If you wish to speak, come on up and give us your name and city of residence.
Hello, I'm Tara Tulley, Loveland, Colorado, for almost 30 years now. Here to, first of all, thank you for your service, and I'd also like to thank the councilman of some, it sounds like your boldness and integrity in representing us very well on the state level. I was unaware of that, and I couldn't be prouder of your boldness and looking out for our citizens in Loveland. There are thousands of people out there just like me, working really hard, that don't really have time to be here, but I'm here because this is an important thing. I wanted to point out something. When you drive into Loveland and you see the beautiful Centerra that's existing, one of the things you see right out of the gate is love, L-O-V-E, Loveland. And I'm going to ask you, who do we love? Who does Loveland love? And I think we would all agree with, it was George, that talked about our citizens of Loveland and providing the necessities that our citizens need. And one of the primal needs of citizens of all of, not just Loveland, everywhere, is housing. Housing is just one of our basic human needs. And I heard recently that 77% of the people that work in Loveland don't even live here. That means they can't afford it. And so, I would, as a Realtor, I do kind of a silly thing, I even brought it with me. I hand all my clients this, and they look at me like I'm real weird, and they're like, "What the heck is that?" I'm like, "I don't know, wave it around." I'm like, "What is it?" I'm like, and they said, "Is this a wand?" I'm like, "Yes, it's a wand, it's a magic wand." And I said, "If you waved a magic wand, client of Tara Tulley," and I'm going to say citizen of Loveland, "what would you, what would you, what do you want?" And they tell me over and over and over again that they want to live in Loveland. And I tell four, five, 10 people a week, I ask them how much money they make. Area median income in Loveland, Colorado is $77,000. That, and I just looked at these numbers, and I, that's why they can't live in Loveland, they can't afford it. Who makes $77,000? I know a great guy that drives truck for Budweiser, he makes $77,000. I know a great guy at Pooter Valley RA, he makes about $82,000. He can't, those incomes cannot afford to buy and frequently cannot afford to rent in Loveland. So Jeff, the Housing Authority guy, said, "We have..." Do you want to stop the clock?
No.
Do it.
Yeah.
I was distracted, sorry.
All right, go ahead. Audience, keep quiet, please.
Thank you. Anyway, Jeff, Housing Authority guy, tells us, "This has never happened. We've never had this opportunity." Thank you for providing and helping partner with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Jane Collins, Loveland. I'm not sure if I'm Ward 2 anymore, I might be in Ward 3, but regardless. I'm not really here to speak on the URA either. To be honest, I gave up hope. I was active in, when the back-to-business folks discredited, and, you know, got involved in that fight. But honestly, a wealthy developer, councilman that had been in his bag, and now a councilwoman, I honestly didn't have much hope.
Madam Mayor, point of order.
And so, the thing is, I want to say, thank you.
Madam Mayor, this is point of order.
Thank you.
Say your point of order.
The lady said that she is not talking to Centerra South, but she just did. So that excludes her from talking, thank you.
And this is exactly why-
Your point is not well taken.
This is exactly why-
She can change her mind up there and talk about whatever she wants to talk about. I mean, she's not limited. Yeah, exactly. Go ahead, please, and I hope we didn't take, I hope we stopped the clock.
Yes, thank you. I think someone's a little triggered in the House, rightfully so. So, here's the thing. I'm tired of councilmen harassing citizens. I am so proud of these folks that came here to every meeting, to went to the council, and went to the state to fight for it. I am so impressed with John Mallow. Thank you for recognizing all these people that didn't have skin in the game. Thank you, Mayor Marsh, for the education. This is a very complicated issue. You know, we have a lucky trust fund kid. He inherited a lot of land. Good for him, he's building an empire. Good for him, but not on our taxpayer money. I need affordable housing, but I don't believe it for a second there's going to be affordable housing, because every time his high-priced folks would talk on it, "Atainable, attainable, attainable housing," nothing about affordable housing. And the way that affordable housing guy looked so nervous, I don't buy it. But thank you, I appreciate you, Mayor Marsh, I appreciate Jody McNally, I appreciate all the people that have fought this, but boy, howdy, we need people to run against you so we have someone to vote you out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Hello, my name is Debbie DeZuris, and I'm from Ward 4. So it seems to be like the suits against the working boots. I mean, I'm a working person in this town, and I don't want to fund this development. I'm not against this development, I think there's a lot of things about this development that are a good thing. I don't want to pay for it. I don't want to pay for Chad McQuinney and Troy McQuinney's generational wealth. It's amazing, because I live in an area that you would call blight, that anybody that visited this town would call blight. Suddenly, it's attractive to be blighted. When you guys look down your nose at all the working people in this town who you expect to pay for this, I'll tell you what, I'm the one looking down my nose at you guys. And I will continue to do that, and the silver lining of this beautiful deal is that we can use this to sink all of your careers, because the McQuinneys are that hated in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Good evening, Bill Jensen, Ward 1. Colorado kids are losing money to URA developers. Backfilling school districts is very costly to, for students statewide. School districts should not share back taxes with URAs. Indirectly, backfilling is paying for developers' infrastructure costs, and I think that's wrong. And then I wanted to make a technical point about this public notice. I'd like to point out that public notices require a time and a place. Recently, there was a motion passed to continue this public notice to today, but that continuance did not include a time or a place, and I think that needs to be critiqued before this motion is discussed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Erin Black, Loveland, Colorado. I actually wasn't going to speak. I kind of do have a problem with the development, because I know a lot of the needs of Loveland, and it's childcare. There's no childcare out there. We have a shortage of our labor workforce and a shortage of workforce housing, which this development will not address either. I don't believe we need a high-end mixed-use development. I think we need to take care of our childcare opportunities and add to that in Loveland. I think our labor shortage is in food service, entry-level positions in retail. They need a place to live. It's not attainable housing, it's affordable housing. And I'm going to steal this from somebody online who did a quick job listings from Indeed for our local area. Fifth-grade teacher, 50 grand. Early interventions, autism specialist, $40,000. Certified nursing assistant, $46,000. Group leader at the Boys and Girls Club. Kathy, right, I hope you're listening. 28/8. Amazon warehouse worker, 35/5 a year. Admin at the Welcome Center is 45 grand, if anybody's interested. Medical trauma registrar, 46/2 a year. Deputy town clerk in MEED is 51,000. Library security monitor is 36,000. We have a lot of problems at our library. Maybe if we paid people a little bit more, we could do something about that. Court judicial assistant, 42,000 a year. You would have to make over 61,000 minimum to be able to afford the housing options they're speaking of, and there's no daycare. And so, I don't think this development addresses any of Loveland's needs. And the sidewalks, I've got neighbors who are disabled, and they can't go out in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers? Is there any additional? Come on up and give us your name and city of residence, please.
Peter Raymond, and I've lived in Ward 12, Ward 4 for 12 years, and I don't know anyone here, I don't think anyone knows me, so I'll also say that I'm a retired engineer, took three classes in economics, and I read the reporter Herald. So, the council has gotten some thanks tonight, and I'd like to just thank you again. I can see it's not always a lot of fun, but you're here. I would like to talk a little bit generally about some of the roles I saw in my first meeting two weeks ago. And I can say McQuinney was up here, and they were, as they should, advocates for what they were doing. And when they're talking to themselves, they are experts. So we are supposed to have experts. The city staff was here, and they sounded like McQuinney employees. They're supposed to give us a broad view of what's going on, and they were indistinguishable. And I'm afraid that's somewhat true on the council as well. In some cases, there were questions trying to get that broad view, advantages and disadvantages, and it was like pulling teeth. And in one case, it was impossible. But, so, but I think one of the things that hasn't been covered, except from the citizens, is costs. First-order cost. If you look at big cities, are their tax rates lower? No, their tax rates are higher. And so, the first order, if we have our city growing, we need those taxes. You look at the fire department, taxes cover the salaries, the taxes replace old equipment, the taxes don't cover growth. The taxes don't cover growth. They don't cover new fire stations. They don't cover new fire trucks. And if you look at recently, because the city grew, we had to widen part of 34, and it was about 7 million bucks a mile. So we need that money from the developers that are creating the backups on the road. 34 is practically gridlock. And then, so basically, I mean, you know, where I live, there used to be a dirt road. We now have a traffic circle, and we need another. Money has to pay for that. Developers should be actually paying us, not the other way around. And then I'd like to expand slightly on rising tide. A rising tide helps car dealers that are together. But a rising tide in McWhinney doesn't save a dress shop downtown. That's, we brought in Sprouts, and crunchy groceries is gone.
Thank you. I know it's not easy to talk the first time. Thank you. Is there any additional public comment from inside chambers? That's probably going to be our last one, our last public comment. And so for people that still want to comment on any of the items on the agenda, there will be separate public comment for each of those items.
David Goldberg, Ward 1. I'd like to use this time to remind council and the Communications Advisory Board that Loveland is by no means the only municipality considering changing their wireless ordinance to make it safer for their citizens. In Massachusetts alone right now, the cities of Milis, Sheffield, Great Barrington, Upton, and Chester are reviewing their wireless ordinances. Other city ordinances that have already been amended, as contained in the document I sent to you all, as examples of some of these ordinances, include Laramo County, Fort Collins, Lakewood, San Diego, Malibu, Elk Grove, Illinois, Encinitas, California, and many, many others. I've mentioned a few times that Loveland, as well as many other cities, feel that their hands are tied to a large degree by the Telecommunications Act of 1996 and its requirements, but that the provisions of that act and the FCC were successfully challenged in the D.C. Court of Appeals in 2021. I want to read an excerpt from that court's decision. "We find the commission's order arbitrary and capricious in its failure to respond to record evidence that exposure to RF radiation at levels below the commission's current limits may cause negative health effects unrelated to cancer. That failure undermines the commission's conclusions regarding the adequacy of its testing procedures, particularly as they relate to children, and to conclusions regarding the implications of long-term exposure to RF radiation, exposure to RF pulsation or modulation, and the implications of technological developments that have occurred since 1996, all of which depend on the premise that exposure to RF radiation at levels below its current limits causes no negative health effects. Accordingly, we find those conclusions arbitrary and capricious as well. Finally, we find the commission's order arbitrary and capricious in its complete failure to respond to comments concerning environmental harm caused by RF radiation. That was 2021, and yet, the FCC has failed to act on the court's order to review its exposure guidelines. I know the city feels that there are potential legal challenges if it tries to amend the ordinance. But believe it or not, there are cities amending their ordinance to protect themselves from challenges from people who get harmed by wireless radiation."
Thank you. And that's going to conclude our public comment. Again, on the, each of the items before us tonight, there'll be another opportunity to speak to those items.
Madam Mayor.
We're moving on to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Are you have something to say about the consent agenda?
I have a motion to make.
On the consent agenda?
I have a motion to make, and I believe councilors can make a motion at any time. And I would, I would like to move to have ordinances or resolutions motion, or, I would like to have moved ordinance or resolution motions read immediately after the mayor's introduction of any item.
Second.
Second.
All right. I will point out that it was probably a year ago that I tried to get that done when we were talking about rules of procedures, because that is what Robert Rolle says to do. And I was defeated in that, so I actually am happy that you're bringing that up, because it's the proper way to do it. So, thank you. Any other comments or discussion on the motion?
Does anyone want to make that permanent?
Thank you. That was my clarification.
Yeah, that's what Robert Rolle says.
I would like to, I would like to make that permanent. Second on the permanent.
Can we modify the motion?
All right. So you're going to have to modify your motion.
I will modify my motion to permanently have ordinances and resolution motions read immediately after the mayor's introduction of an item.
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion or questions by councilors? Roll call, please.
Ball?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Overcash?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Mallow?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the vote was nine to zero.
Thank you. The, that motion passes.
Madam Mayor.
So going forward after, after tonight, going forward after tonight, Dylan, if you would, when you're doing the schedule, the agenda, if you would please kind of indicate that, so that we do that properly. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor?
I would like to move to limit council questions to no more than two rounds, with only two questions each per member per round.
Second.
So I will comment on this. This has happened three times, I believe, in the five and a half years that I've been on council. Once in 2019, twice now in 2023, where we limit the questions that council can ask to get information and clarity. And I will point out that on all three of those, all three of those events, 2019, twice in 2023, it is the Centerra developer, just for the record. Is any, right, any other comments? Yes, Counselor Vogel?
Yes, I do have a comment. And just for the record, so that we're not looking like we're doing anything special for Centerra, I'd like to make this a permanent part of council procedure. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second.
So first of all, we have one motion on the table.
Mm-hmm. I seconded it.
And that's the motion we are discussing now.
We made an amendment.
We just made an amendment.
You have to say it, though.
Okay, I move to amend the motion on the table to make it a permanent part of council procedure.
Second.
Second on the amendment. And city attorney, I'd like to make note that public hearings, we are talking about limiting the amount of questions, therefore the amount of information and clarity council members can get. Thank you. And please, Dylan, have that be part of the record as well. All right, we have an amendment. Yes?
I have a comment on the amendment.
Okay, thank, thank you.
So I don't, I certainly don't deny that the timing that the mayor mentioned, it does happen, it has happened during this, this is, and this is the only time that I've been here when this happens, during, you know, the conversation about the URA. But I will say, at first, I was nervous that we wouldn't be able to get enough information. But we have had it happen now, where it's gone around, and people haven't even had a second round of questions. Now, what I would like to just clarify is that we would still be able to make a motion to have extended question or something the chair maybe can make, I don't know how we could do it. But in the event that someone, okay, Pat and I thought the same thing. A motion just like we do with public comment, if we have additional questions. Okay. I do kind of like it, because it makes us be a little bit more organized. I think we probably should add into the verbiage, though, that there's no long lead-ins by any counselor, Vogel. So if that would be okay. Or we just accept that that's our role as part of this.
So you're talking about no pre-politicking prior to asking your question?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Oh, I like that. I'm not sure how to word it, though.
I don't, we're going to have to hold you accountable for that one.
We are talking about the amendment?
Yes. So, as I said, then I like it permanent for that reason, because it does, I do feel like it makes us a little more targeted and more concise. So, I'll support this one.
I'm going to also comment on the fact that I, I think it, it requires that council does their homework. And it requires that if you have a ton of questions, that you are asking those questions ahead of time to get the information you need. And then the specifics are on when you actually have the presenters up here. You shouldn't, you shouldn't be blindsided by anything that's being presented if you actually do your homework, read your packet, and do the work that's needed. So, I support it being permanent.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment?
I have a, one more thing. I actually have a question for you, Mayor. And this is sort of on the amendment, but I'm a little bit more on the main motion. But would you feel more comfortable if it were three rounds? Because we don't always use all two rounds.
I don't think there should be any limits on questions. We've never, ever had that. Questions are where we get clarity. We get answers to things, which a lot of times, people in the public send us questions.
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah. It's not only our own, it's we're asking them for the public.
Right.
So I don't believe that you should ever limit.
Okay.
We have a motion and an amendment on the table, Madam Mayor.
Does there any more discussion? Counselor Olson?
Yeah, my preference would be for, I would like this looked into, and with staff and maybe a couple of members of council, to look at how we could craft this, looking back maybe at some or others, and, and limit this, this motion to just tonight. But I would like a rule of four, if you will, to look in this as how we could address this, where we can adequately get our questions answered, but also expedite the, the meeting. It's been my practice for a long time to provide questions to staff, review the material, and as I review the material, I provide the questions to staff. They are very gracious in either incorporating the, the responses into their presentation or giving me a response prior to the meeting. So other councilors might find that handy.
So that would be a different, you know, rule of four request or motion. Right now, we're just dealing with the amendment, which was to make it permanent. Is there any other comments? Counselor Overcash, do you have a comment? All right. Any other comments on the amendment? All right. Roll call on the amendment, please.
Foley?
Yes.
Sampson?
No.
Overcash?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
McFall?
No.
Marsh?
No.
Mallow?
No.
Olson?
I need clarity. What's the amendment we're voting on?
The amendment was to make it permanent, that there'd be two rounds of two questions.
No.
Until changed later.
No.
Ball?
No.
Madam Mayor, the vote was three to, one, two, three, four, five, six.
The motion fails. All right, we are back to the main motion, which was for tonight, to limit it to two rounds of two questions. Is there any questions or comments from council before roll call?
I'd just like to say, I originally said I would support it being permanent, but Counselor Olson, I actually think that it's a better idea to do a little bit of studying about it.
Thank you.
So I support that. Thank you for bringing that forward.
So this is for this evening only. Any other comments or questions? I have lights on, but I don't think you have comments or questions. Roll, roll call, please.
Sampson?
Yes.
Overcash?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Mallow?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the vote's eight to one.
Thank you. The motion passes. We move on to...
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I would, I would like to move to suspend our 10:30 time limit tonight.
Second.
Okay. So no time limit, is what you're saying?
No time limit.
Okay. So is your suggestion that we complete the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
So do you want to amend it to that, that you complete the agenda?
Um, I say we suspend the time limit.
Suspending the time limit does that?
It does it.
How about, let's suspend, or let's complete the agenda. We know where we're going.
Okay. I, I move to complete the agenda tonight.
Second. Any discussion by council? Roll call, please.
Overcash?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Mallow?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the vote was nine to zero.
Thank you. The motion passes. We move on to our consent agenda. At this time, any council member may request that an item on the consent agenda be moved to the regular agenda. These items will be heard at the end of the regular agenda. Members of the public who have not previously provided public comment at this meeting on an item moved to the regular agenda will be given an opportunity to speak to the item before the council acts upon it. Are there any councilors who wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing, seeing none. Dylan, if you could please read the titles of the ordinances that remain on the consent agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are three items. The first is Ordinance 6607. This is second reading. It relates to Item 3.2. It's designating 1404 and 1410 North Garfield Avenue in Loveland, Colorado as a historic district. The second is Ordinance 6615, second reading, enacting a supplemental budget and appropriation to the 2023 City of Loveland budget for 2023 citywide mid-year new appropriations. And Ordinance 6616, also second reading, enacting a supplemental budget and appropriation to the 2023 City of Loveland budget for contracts and obligations appropriated but not completed in 2022.
All right. Could we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
A motion to adopt the consent agenda, Items 3.1 to 3.4, with the exception of no items.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Mallow?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Overcash?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the vote was nine to zero.
Thank you. The motion passes. We now come to Item 6, new business from council. This is an opportunity for council members to introduce new business, to discuss at this time, or on a future city council agenda. Council members will have 10 minutes to discuss each new business item. Counselor Olson, I think you had a rule of four or a motion that you were speaking of?
Well, thank you for, I was going to wait till later, but this is a great time. Thank you for that. I'd like a rule of four to review the move to limit council to, no, council questions to no more than two rounds of two questions each per member, and propose a, recommend, make a recommendation to council.
Second.
I support, and I, I support it, and I'd like to volunteer to be on that committee. I also would like to get...
I think it, now it takes five, doesn't it? It's a rule of five.
No, it takes five when it comes back.
Oh, okay.
It's so, four, four initially.
Okay. So I'm not counting. Our city manager, were you counting hands?
I see.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I just want to clarify that the motion is to look at this question, but you also want a staff slash city council committee to be involved in that.
Yes. Correct. Yes, that was...
Okay.
And, and to make a recommendation.
All right. Is there other new business? All right, city attorney, I would like to put on the record that there was a letter crafted on, and printed on city letterhead. Six city council members signed it, a letter to the governor. I believe that may be a violation of open meeting law. And I would like to put that on the record, that there is concern from my part about a violation of open meeting law. And also, there is a typed page being circulated on the dais tonight. At least three members of council have been shown that, and that could be another possible violation of open meeting law.
Madam Mayor, I would like to comment on that.
Please do.
Uh, the piece that's being circulated on the dais is a list of possible motions. I asked our city attorney to prepare for us as a group, and I passed those out at the beginning of our meeting just so that we have clarity in our speech, because when we've done these motions before, we kind of get stumbling over ourselves. So I asked that it be prepared by Moses, and it was.
So that should be publicly acknowledged, and I know I did not get a copy, so it was apparently given to only special counselors. So I just want both of those on the record, that I have concerns about open meeting violation. We move now to our regular agenda, procedural information. Council will give anyone in the audience time to speak to any item on the regular agenda before acting upon it. The mayor will call, will call for public comment as part of the consideration of each item according to state law, the charter, its rules of procedure, and other legal requirements. Loveland's charter only requires that a majority of the quorum present vote in favor to adopt an ordinance on first reading. However, adopting an ordinance on second or final reading requires that at least five of the nine council members vote in favor. Our first item is 7.1 for development services. Presenter Marika Cope, Westerdahl North Edition Annexation Annexation Agreement, Zoning Document, and Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And then I believe a motion, right?
Madam Mayor.
City manager.
Yes?
Um, as I'd spoken before, uh, staff would like to respectfully request a motion of the city council to open this item and continue it to May 30th, which is now a special council meeting. So moved.
Um, so I have a question because-
Second.
This is first reading. So when you say move forward to another meeting, is that for first reading?
As, motion was to open the item and continue it to-
So when we continue it to the next date, is that first reading? So we're not gonna say it's second reading. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that clarification.
So I'd seek a motion from city council for that.
I think we had a motion. I haven't-
So moved and second.
I don't know who did the second, counselor. So that is-
Mayor Protem Overcash was second.
So that is for the entire item, which is four motions. All right, we have a motion and a second to, do we have a date specific for that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's, uh, I mentioned that, May 30th, which is now a special council meeting.
Okay. For first reading. Okay. What, you're shaking your head, Pat?
I just need some clarification of why.
Yeah.
Staff is requesting, uh, that it be moved tonight to allow time for the other item that's on the agenda.
Well, it saves me from trying to move the last item up, so that works.
All right, there's a, go ahead, Counselor Sampson, yes.
Are the presenters for this item here, and did they know that we were going to be moving this item potentially?
They did, and I've been in contact with them.
Okay. And that's something they're okay, it's like Commissioner Donnelly, former Commissioner Donnelly, former commissioner, excuse me. Okay. And that's something that, that the presenters are all right with. Okay. Thank you.
Um, I doubt that, um, former Commissioner Donnelly would be here if he'd known that it was gonna be delayed.
Madam Mayor, are you questioning why he's here tonight?
No, no, I'm, yes, I'm wondering why Commissioner, former commissioner-
Because he's, he's representative of the item, and he wanted to make sure council voted for it tonight, so he showed up-
Okay.
To make sure it's okay. So-
All right. With, without objection, we'll let, we'll hear from former Commissioner Tom Donnelly. Nice to see you.
Stop with the former thing. Geez. Uh, someone once, a former congressman once told me, he says, "It's a short trip from who's who to who's he." And I'm there, I guess. I'm a former, addressed as former everything. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and, and members of the council. I'm actually here, um, in the event that this item did come forward, I wanted to be here just in case. Uh, but I had spoken to, I'd spoken to the city manager and your, um, planning services director, and also our planner, Marika, um, a few times this week. Um, and they had, we, and, and they had told me that they felt like we were gonna have to delay this. So I wanna, I wanna thank the council for their consideration and holding a special meeting, frankly, just, just for us, and trying to expedite this rather than putting us off two months. So, so we're appreciative that you are fitting us in at the end of this month. And we will accept that, that, uh, future hearing date and the, and the continuation of this hearing. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate hearing from you on that. Yeah. All right. So we have a motion and a second to, um, basically table, delay this until May 30th. Any discussion by council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I could just, I need to be, uh, careful about the motion, because the motion is to open this item and continue it to May 30th.
And I stated, I stated so moved.
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanna make sure.
Okay.
So we're being correct for some reasons.
And I seconded.
All right. Do we, Dylan, do you have the, the motion and the second? Okay. Roll call, please.
Do we need public comment on that?
Nope.
No.
I, I think because we're not-
Yeah.
Okay.
McFall?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Malo?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Overcash?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the vote was nine to zero. Thank you. The motion passes. We move on to our, the last item, the last item on our regular agenda. It's coming to us from finance. Presenter will be Brian Waldis, Moses Garcia, and Dalton Kelly. Uh, resolution, um, why don't we take a 10-minute recess?
Thank you.
Yeah, since this is gonna take a little bit of time, we will reconvene at 7:45. We stand in recess. All right. We are reconvened as Loveland City Council. Our next item, 7.2 from finance. Presenter is Brian Waldis, Moses Garcia, and Dalton Kelly. Resolutions of the Loveland City Council approving amendment of the US 34 Crossroads Renewal Plan to remove Centerra South from the existing urban renewal plan and adopting the Centerra South Urban Renewal Plan. There are two motions, so, um, Counselor Ball, if you'll read the first one.
A motion to adopt resolution number R492023 of the Loveland City Council approving a modification to the US 34 Crossroads Corridor Renewal Plan.
Second.
All right. Um, Brian, who's taking it away?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Brian Waldis, Chief Finance Officer for the city. To my left is Dalton Kelly with Butler Snow, outside counsel for the city. Uh, the two motions that you just read, Madam Mayor, are before council for consideration. Uh, as the titles indicate, one will indicate the modification of the existing US 34 Crossroads Renewal Plan. That is to remove, uh, the parcel that will then, through the second motion, be approved for the Centerra South Urban Renewal Plan, um, plan area. And without further ado, I'll introduce Dalton Kelly, who'll begin our, our presentation.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and city council. I'm Dalton Kelly with Law from Butler Snow. We've served as outside counsel to the city in connection with this matter. And so the presentation, uh, that I'm gonna go through is gonna cover the topics for both motions and both resolutions, since they're interrelated. Uh, and so it will cover both the modification to the US 34 Crossroads Corridor Plan and, uh, the consideration of a potential, uh, urban renewal plan for Centerra South. So, um, just as a way of our agenda, we'll go through kind of the background on the US 34 Crossroads, uh, renewal plan. We'll go over statutory authority for doing a modification. Um, we'll talk about the proposed modification and then start drilling down on, uh, overview of Centerra South, the, and the findings that, uh, need to be made by the city council. So the definition of what is a blighted area, what goes into the determination of what is a blighted area, and then findings and determinations under the statute that are based on the public hearing tonight. So, just as a background, the US 34 Crossroads Urban Renewal Plan, uh, was originally adopted on January 20th, 2004. Um, the property that is now referenced as Centerra South was added in 2008 um, due to a major modification that is now known as the FLEX Amendment. There have been several, um, non-substantial modifications, but this came in as part of a substantial modification in 2008. Um, the urban renewal plan for, uh, US 34 Crossroads currently covers approximately 2,113.664 acres. And the parcel that is being called, uh, Centerra South is approximately 139.381 acres or 6.59% of the total current plan area. So just by way of illustration, um, we've seen this map a lot now, but this is the area that the modification would exclude. This is what is being proposed, uh, to be excluded. This is Centerra South. And then this map depicts what the US 34 Crossroads, uh, URA Plan would cover if Centerra South is removed. Um, again, Centerra South is right here, so this is currently part of the, part of the plan. Um, if the modification is approved, that portion would come out. Uh, everything else in yellow that you see remains in the US 34 Crossroads Corridor Plan. So, under the statute, the city council has the authority to amend an urban renewal plan at any time. The proposed modification is to be submitted to the city council, which this has been. And then if the modification will substantially change the provisions of the plan regarding land area, land use, authorization to collect tax increment, uh, the extent of using tax increment, you know, a couple of other things listed on the screen. I won't read the entire thing. Then the modification is substantial, and it requires, uh, different notice and hearing, uh, criteria than just, uh, a non-substantial modification. As we discussed, the proposed modification will remove Centerra South from the current US 34 Crossroads Corridor Plan. Uh, the Centerra South parcel is approximately 139.381 acres, which is just 6.59% of the total area currently covered by the plan. We're not changing anything else about the plan, just removing, uh, that, that portion, that less than 10% portion. Uh, due to the small change in the total area of the plan, uh, the modification, um, is not substantial, and the city council can find that is not substantial. Uh, the city council has done this, um, as I noted, on seven other occasions, either adding property or, um, removing property from this plan. Um, and then just, so if the plan, if the modification is approved, the plan would then cover 1,974 acres. And the resolution's effectiveness is conditioned on the approval of the Centerra South Urban Renewal Plan. So if this, uh, resolution is approved, but the resolution for the Centerra South Urban Renewal Plan is not approved, the pro, the effectiveness of pulling that property out, um, will not occur. And so this property will stay in US 34 Crossroads unless the Centerra South Urban Renewal Plan is, uh, is approved. So, turning our focus to the new proposed urban renewal plan, that's before you tonight. Uh, Centerra South, as we've discussed, is approximately 140 acres that would be removed from the current US 34 Crossroads Corridor Urban Renewal Plan. Just so that we're on the same page, we're talking about just this, uh, shaded portion right here. That's Centerra South, and that is the proposed new urban renewal area. So, under the statute, one of the findings that council has to make is that the proposed urban renewal area constitutes a blighted area for purposes of the statute. So, um, listed there with a citation is just that, "An authority shall not actually undertake an urban renewal project uh, for an urban renewal area unless, based on evidence presented at a public hearing, uh, the governing body of the municipality by resolution has determined such area, and in our case, to be a blighted area, um, and designate such area as appropriate for, um, an urban renewal project." A blighted area is defined by the statute, and so we're talking about what constitutes a blighted area for purposes of the urban renewal statute. The urban renewal statute provides that a blighted area means that, an area that in its present condition and use, and by reason of the presence of at least four of the factors on the following slide, um, substantially impairs or arrests the sound growth of the municipality, slows the provision of housing accommodations, or constitutes an economic or social liability, and is a menace to the public health, safety, morals, or wealth, or welfare. So there's 11 blight factors, um, in your council packet tonight, and as has been, um, discussed in previous sessions with council, uh, there was a, uh, condition survey done by SEH, uh, that looked at the Centerra South parcel, um, and found that five of the 11 blight factors, uh, exist. There's one additional blight factor that's just not relevant because it requires consent with the property owners. So the five blight factors that were found by the condition survey are the slum deteriorated or deteriorating structures, predominance of defective or inadequate street layout, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, unusual topography, or inadequate public improvements or utilities, and the existence of health, safety, or welfare, welfare factors, uh, requiring high levels of municipal services or substantial physical, under utilization, under utilization or vacancy of sites, buildings, or other improvements. So this is just running through that, um, condition survey was done by SEH in, uh, April 21st, 2022, um, and that the condition survey is evidence being presented to the council. The condition survey found that, established, uh, the five conditions on the prior slide, and found that these conditions substantially impair and arrest the sound growth of the city, slow the provision of housing accommodations, and constitute an economic and social liability, and are a menace to the public health, safety, morals, and welfare. This is evidence being, uh, submitted to the city council. City council can weigh that evidence and make its own determination as to whether this constitutes a blighted area for purposes of the statute. Next, uh, because this area contains property that has been classified by the Laramore County Assessor as agricultural land for purposes of levying uh, and collection of property taxes during the five years prior to today, uh, it is deemed agricultural land for purposes of the statute. And so under the statute, uh, if it's agricultural land, you have to make the blight determination, and then one of five exceptions must be satisfied. Um, what the statute does not say is agland cannot be included. That is not what it says. It says agland can be included if one of these five exceptions, uh, is satisfied. Pursuant to the law that is in effect as of today, this land meets what we've called exception C, so 3125107C2E of the urban renewal law provides that, um, no, no area that has been designated as an urban renewal area shall contain agland unless the agland was included in an approved urban renewal plan prior to June 1, 2010. As we just discussed, this land was included in the US 34 Crossroads Urban Renewal Plan prior to June 1, 2010. That's the law as in effect and as written today. The last thing the city council has to do to, um, adopt an urban renewal plan is ba, uh, the city council, based on the evidence presented, um, at the public hearing, can adopt an urban renewal plan if certain findings and determinations are made. Findings and determinations are listed here on this slide. And on the next slide, they're also present in the resolution as findings. If this city council chooses to adopt that resolution, um, just quickly running through it, that the boundaries have been narrowly drawn, um, as the council determines to be feasible to accomplish the planning and development objectives of the urban renewal area. If the urban renewal project is expected to displace individuals or businesses, there needs to be feasible mes, uh, methods, or that you believe there are feasible methods to relocate them. Right now, uh, there's not, uh, an expectation to displace any families or businesses, but if there are, um, that would be the, you would just need a basis that there's a reasonable method for doing so. That the council has taken reasonable efforts to provide written notice at the public hearing, uh, as provided by the statute. That no more than 120 days have passed since the commencement of the first public hearing, uh, the first public hearing on this. Uh, this item was opened on April 18th, so 120 days have not passed yet. Uh, no portion of the property was included in a previously submitted plan that, um, council failed to approve, so, uh, that one's satisfied. Uh, the plan conforms to the comprehensive plan, uh, of the city as a whole. Um, that's a finding that the city council has to make, and I know you've received a recommendation from the planning commission, uh, that, uh, is contrary to that, so that's something that the finding would, uh, go against that recommendation. But that recommendation has been made, but it is non-binding. This is your finding on whether it complies with the comprehensive plan. Um, the urban renewal plan sets forth, um, why the, the plan does. Um, but that is a determination for the city council to make. The recommendation is non-binding. Next, that the plan will afford maximum opportunity consistent with the sound needs of the city as a whole for the rehabilitation or redevelopment of the urban renewal area by private enterprise. Um, the next one, because no portion of the property taxes under the urban renewal plan as, um, submitted to the city council tonight, there's no tax, uh, increment revenue of the county or the pest control district, um, being pulled off. Um, so this one about county services due to incremental tax revenue, uh, is inapplicable. And then last, because the property, uh, the subject property is open land, there are two additional findings. One has to deal with, um, the provision of sta, um, safe housing and that, um, the conditions of blight in the city and the urban renewal area, um, so that the clearance of blight in the, um, so, excuse me. So, there's a shortage of safe and sound, uh, housing in the city. The need for housing accommodations will increase as a result of clearance of slums in other areas, including portions of the urban renewal area, that the condition of blight in the urban renewal area, uh, and the shortage of decent and safe housing, uh, cause or contribute to, uh, increase the spread of disease or crime, or constitute a public menace to the public health, safety, morals, and welfare. Um, there's no acqui, uh, acquisition planned on this, so the last portion's, um, not really applicable. And then the last part, because of commercial use, the non-residential uses of the property in the urban renewal area are necessary and appropriate to facilitate the proper growth and development of the community in accordance with sound planning standards and local community objectives. Uh, and that the can, uh, contemplated acquisition, again, there's no comp, uh, contemplated acquisition. So it's mostly just the first part of that. Last, the, the urban renewal plan, uh, submitted for Centerra South, it authorizes the use of property tax increment financing. Um, set, sales tax increment financing is not contemplated by the plan, um, as required by the statute. Uh, Lura has negotiated property tax increment sharing agreements with all taxing entities whose, um, agreements with all taxing entities whose tax increment would be allocated under the plan. As I previously mentioned, Laramore County and the Pest Control District will not be subject to the property tax increment provisions of the plan, and therefore, no agreement is necessary under the statute. With that, I know it's a lot of legalese and high-level stuff, so I'll open it up for questions.
Counselor Fogel.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Counselor Sampson.
Thank you. Nice to see you again, Dalton. I always thought your last name was Snow, so that's good to know, finally, after we've known each other now for a month. So I have two questions for you, because that's what I'm allowed. The unsafe conditions were based initially, I had thought one of the unsafe conditions was the railroad crossing. And are we going to be addressing that? And is, can that still be considered a condition if we don't address it with the URA? That was one question, all in one.
Yeah.
Just so people know.
Our consultant, Andy Arnold, who did the condition survey, and speak to the conditions of the property. Right now, whether the urban renewal authority, so what you're looking at tonight is what it takes to remediate blight in this urban renewal area. I know there is a plan that has been proposed. That plan hasn't been approved yet. You are sitting as the city council, and the LURA board, sitting as the LURA board, will determine, you'll determine which plans are approved and what's going to develop in this area. And LURA will determine how tax increment revenues shall be spent. If something's not approved, then tax increment revenues can't be spent that way. And so railroad crossing is something that this council can deem to be necessary for the safety and the safe ingress, ingress, egress of this property, and that's something that you can work in, and then that would be something appropriate for TIF. When you're looking at this property and the conditions, that is a condition that, that could pose a threat. That's a legislative finding for you to make, but if that's something about this property, it was discussed, it was, Andy could come up here and talk about what's in the condition survey, but that is something that you can consider, because that would be something that would be required for development of this property.
Okay. Would it be appropriate to hear from Andy about that, or not at this time?
No.
Okay, that's all right. Okay, thank you. Then my second question is, if the item, so you had mentioned that the item was opened on April 18th, but then there's also the notice, the 30-day notice, which we've kind of gone around about here, and it has not been 30 days since April 18th. So how exactly does that public notice process work, and how does that apply in this instance where we're still abiding by the law?
I mean, same way that the notice requirements for the annexation agreement that you just moved apply, same way that they apply for any land use approval apply. When you have a notice that has to be published, I've seen it done with metro districts, you have a notice that needs published for a public hearing, you get to that date, and for some reason, the council is not quite ready, or because of other circumstances, has to open the hearing and move it. The public notice was published, what statute requires is at least 30 days before the public hearing. It was published at least 30 days before April 18th. The public hearing was open. That notice sufficiently described the date, time, place, the plan, complied with the statute, and so you're within your power to open that public hearing and continue it. We did it just tonight on an annexation agreement. It's, it's happened before on other land use matters. It's the same thing. We're meeting statutory criteria. Clearly, notice got out, because I think everybody has heard about this. But for purposes of the statute, you're allowed to, you're allowed to publish the notice and open the hearing, and if it has to be continued, it has to be continued.
Okay, so my confusion was that you said the item was opened on April 18th, but that's actually the day that would have had to have been noticed, and it was, it was noticed April 18th. It's not the day that the notice has to go out, like the, it's not, you don't have to wait until April 18th to submit a notice. That's the day that was noticed, because that was the opening of the hearing. Is that right?
Yeah, that was the opening of the hearing.
I just didn't understand that.
Yeah, it's 30 days back from April 18th.
Okay.
Moses, I believe it's in the packet, but do you recall off the top of your head when that notice was published?
March 1st.
March 1st.
March 1st, so more than 30 days before April 18th.
I just wanted clarification. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Counselor McFaul.
So, good, it's, it's amazing. There are some questions I haven't asked in all this time, so I'm going to try and ask this one. So it's my understanding, based on information that was passed, I can't remember if it was in the, in January, or whenever, in between, that prior to being moved out of the current URA, or being requested to be moved out of the current URA, the parcel land there was already considered blighted. Am I correct?
Yeah, it was considered blighted to be included in the, the plan in 2008.
So if it was considered to be blighted already, then why do we, why does it, I guess, and this, my question's going to be brought here, so why does it have to go back to that again? To ensure that no changes are made to remove that blight study that was there? Can you explain that?
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, the, the blight determination essentially stands on its own. There, there's, can't recall the case, but there was a case where they said the prior blight determination isn't sufficient. At the end of the day, we're looking at a new plan. You need to make sure it's still blighted, because to be included in a new urban renewal plan, the property has to be blighted, and you have to make that blighted area determination pursuant to the statute. And so you have to do a new one. The fact that there was an old study, it shows that this determination has been made in the past by prior city council. You know, I don't believe much has happened on the property, and so, you know, that's something that you can think about, but at the end of the day, you need the new blight study.
Is that it? All right, Counselor Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor. Dalton, I believe that you mentioned in your presentation that the county assessors classified this property as ag land for the purposes of levying property taxes. What, how is the city designated or zoned this property? Do you know? Maybe that's not a question for you, but somebody from staff?
Yeah, I don't think it's a question for me, but I believe it is. In the Millennium PUD, there's a PUD zoning on this property for Centerra, but I would defer to Moses or city staff on, on how exactly it's zoned, but I believe it's in a PUD.
Can I get a, an answer from somebody, staff?
Development Services.
They here? That doesn't count as a question.
Sure it does.
Are they not? Well, let me, let me follow up with that then. So if this is approved tonight, within a short period of time, the county assessor's going to reclassify this property, as I understand it. What will they reclassify it to?
Well, they revalue it for purposes of the statute. They increase the base for a non-ag distinction. Oh, well, they take the market value for purposes of the base, but under the statute, it doesn't change the zoning, it, or doesn't change the tax classification. It just moves that base for purposes of the urban renewal plan.
That's my two questions, but I'll, I'll be back.
Okay. Counselor Foley.
Thank you. Which entity has the sole responsibility of determining blight?
That'd be this body of the city council.
So no other taxing entities have that responsibility of determining blight?
Right. No taxing entities, LURA, really, no one involved in this. I know there are several parties. At the end of the day, the blight determination is for the city council to make alone.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Fogel.
I'm not sure exactly how to word this, but the, the existing Centerra area has a significant debt on it, 200 and some million dollars, which has been well offset by the 150 approximate million dollars worth of public infrastructure that's been turned over to the city to date. So with that debt on the existing Centerra, is there any debt on this Centerra South property?
There's no debt on the current Centerra South parcel, because it's not currently in a metropolitan district. It wasn't part of those issuances, and so it's not subject to any current debt.
Because it was never improved?
It was included in the urban renewal area, but not the metro districts. The metro districts are the ones who issued the debt, and so it depends on where their boundaries are. This is outside of the metro district boundaries.
Okay. When it, when you're taking 6% out of the master Centerra agreement, does that represent a significant loss of income potential to that original Centerra to cause the debtors any problems, or are the banks fine with it?
I mean, at the end of the day, it's not generating any tax revenue right now. There's nothing coming off it, but I would defer to the numbers, I would defer to Andy on any questions about what it's currently generating, but because it's not in the part of the metro district right now, there's no debt attached to it, and it's not generating anything.
So it's not going to adversely affect the main Centerra body?
Right now, it's not contributing to, to those bonds.
Thank you.
All right. Dylann, can I have you bring up that one page? 899 in our packet. Can we blow that up at all?
899 in which section?
It's in, it's page 899 in our packet, and Dylann has it there. So this is one building in Railway Flats, which is, I think, the most recent apartment complex in Centerra. It's the one to the east of the Promenade Shops. And you'll see that the mill levy for the metro district is 42.175, and the annual metro district fees for that one building is $70,980.53. Logically, those funds, those fees will be passed on to the tenants. My question is, what do you anticipate the metro fees being on the apartments, or anything being built in Centerra South? What will the metro fees be?
That'd be a question for the developer. Right now, the metro districts aren't before us. What we have tonight is the urban renewal plan. Simply what this plan does would start tax increment allocation to LURA, that tax increment hasn't been directed anywhere. I believe representatives of the developer and the metro district are here. Maybe they can answer those questions for you, Mayor.
Since they're claiming attainable housing, and here you tack on another 70, 71,000. So is there anybody can answer what the metro fees will be? Well, it is if you're saying it's attainable housing. It's, well. Welcome, Alan.
Hi.
And you probably need to hit the button so it goes green. All right.
Is that working?
Yes.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Alan Pogue, General Counsel, Centerra Metropolitan Districts 1 through 5. As Dalton mentioned, the Metro District Service Plan for Centerra South is going to be heard by this board or this council on June the 6th. The city's model service plan, which we're following with respect to the residential component of Centerra South, caps the mill levy for debt at 50, and the mill levy for operations at 10.
So 50 plus 10, okay.
Believe that equals 60, but I can check with Peggy if she needs to check my math.
I think you're capable of that.
I think you are.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And then early on in this Section 7.2, in fact, it's the third page in, there's a, under budgetary impact, it says estimated to generate approximately $684,000 annually once the project reaches buildout. What year do you project buildout?
Madam Mayor, I might ask the developer to say exactly what year would be complete buildout, because there's three different metrics.
Well, that's what they're saying. At the end of buildout, we're going to get 684,000 annually. So when is buildout?
Mayor, what page are you on?
It's page 349. Literally, it's page three of Item 7.2, under budgetary impact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Carolyn White, on behalf of the developer, McWinnie. I believe that $684,000 number that you're referring to comes from an analysis that was prepared by the city's consultant, based on a absorption schedule that was included in the impacts analysis.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to find which page in the packet.
Yeah, it would be helpful to have it under the same item versus leaving it hanging, you know, when.
No, it's in, it's in, I just want to give you the exact page.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
It's in the, it's in...
It would just be helpful to have it in that same box, when you say, when reaches buildout, estimated to be X year.
Yeah. I've got the page number. So it's page 494 of your packet is where the impact report begins, and the tables at the end of the impact report show the estimated absorption that was calculated based on the, your consultant's interview with the developer, you know, which includes their projections of sort of how many units of houses would be purchased each year, and how many thousand square feet of retail would be rented each year. And that is, I think Andy is here, if he wants to help me out and tell me what page of his report this is on.
Well, like I said, it'd be helpful to have it in the same line as, I, well, excuse me.
Oh, I found it.
I mean, we're all trying to find it, and it's taking up time, because it's not there.
What are you going to do, a hanger?
No, I'm just saying, it would be helpful in the future.
I apologize. I heard earlier, it wouldn't be appropriate for me to come up, so that's why I stayed back, but I'm happy to answer that question.
Yeah, just.
So the absorb, the, the impact report and the cost of service study, because I think they're both being referenced here, we look, we worked with the developer to get an idea of the absorption schedule. We also have to think about this in terms of tax revenue. So it's always one year in arrears of when you would think of a certificate of occupancy. It would start, we would believe the first year of assessed value would start in 2027, and then the last year of new assessed value would be 2032. And so, in a sense, if you wanted to say, well, which year is this project fully built out, I would say 2032 would be the year that it is fully built out.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Let's see, is there anybody who hasn't asked a question in the first round? Counselor Mallow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Andy, don't go anywhere. I've had the luxury of looking at the 2008 blight study, and it was, it was largely impacted by a racetrack, dog track, that was boarded up, along with the kennels, that were abandoned. I know that these blight studies, you take everything in total, right? So at that time, Block 2, what is, which is now what is Centerra South. I took a look, and there was only two recommendations that even remotely touched Block 2. So I guess my question is, did you take into effect any of 2008 in your 2023?
Yes. So that, that's how I started that blight study, condition survey, I call it, in, what was it, 2022, when we did it? The first thing I did is reviewed that original one. I believe it was done by Matrix Design Group, and they had, I think, also five blighting factors. We had five, out of the five blighting factors, four overlapped. I think we had different blighting factors for the fifth one. But ultimately, I look at, while that was a great reference point, I'm not going to take what they say, you know, at face value, so to speak. I'm going in, looking at this property with fresh eyes, and looking at the blighting factors I've seen on other similar properties, and what constitutes it. So that's how I came to my five, which were the, you know, inadequate street layouts. You know, it was also the, the lack of infrastructure. I believe that's blighting factor six, blighting factor 11, the, the vacancy and underutilization on the site. In terms of unsafe and unsanitary conditions, that was again a reference to lack of ingress, egress, traffic impacts, which overlap with that blighting factor six and blighting factor two. And when I did my original blighting, blight study, there was a clump of trees and a dilapidated structure in the corner of, of that parcel boundary, that, that constituted one part of the deteriorating structures and blighting factor. The other one was that this property didn't appreciate at a similar level as other properties throughout, that were vacant throughout the Loveland City Limits. And so that, it constitutes, when, when I look at open land, I look at appreciation rates to see, is this lagging behind, which could represent deterioration?
Thank you.
Is that your only question there?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody else who hasn't asked in the first round? All right, we'll start the second round. Counselor McFaul.
So, Brian, just clarify me for me, because it's, it's, continues to come up, and I seem to think there's nothing coming out of there, but I just want to make sure if we missed something. Are there any taxing funds or anything else coming out of the, the fire authority at all for Centerra South? Because it keeps, keeps coming up that we're taking money away from there.
For LFRA?
Yes.
No, the LFRA is not funded directly by tax revenue. It's funded by the city in that area. There is a mill level, a mill levy for LFRA, but that's outside the city. So there are no tax revenues being diverted currently for LFRA.
And then, obviously, people keep bringing up the School District and pulling funds. Does City Council have anything to do with the funds for the School District at all?
No.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Olson?
Thank you. How does this project compare with other URAs that have included ag land regarding the criteria of BLIGHT? I assume there's, there's others.
Yes, so I'll, I'll take a stab at that question, similar to Councilman Mallow's question about other condition surveys and similar properties. Yes, I have personally completed condition surveys on properties that include agricultural land or open land, and some of the factors are very similar. Lack of infrastructure, underutilization and vacancy, is the land, has the land been positioned for sale for an extended period of time and has no development occurred on that, that property? One of the factors that sometimes comes up with ag land is actually factor three, which is faulty lots. You could have a lot that's 1,000 acres, and it could be very difficult to develop because it's not subdivided, for example. But that, that wasn't the case with this one. So I'd say, in general, the Centerra South project being zoned for development, being for sale for commercial development since 2008 exhibited many of the similar blighting factors that have to do with challenges to development that largely rest on infrastructure and safety.
Thank you for that. The, just curious, what amount of, of land, we're pulling out roughly 6%, a little less than 7% from the north Centerra into the south, what would, what amount of land would be substantial?
There's no hard and fast rule or case on point. You know, courts in other areas have looked at 10% as de minimis. It's kind of for this City Council to determine what you think is nonsubstantial, given that it is less than 10% and we're not changing any other provisions of the plan. We're solely talking about the area. You know, it's, it's within your purview to say, yeah, this isn't substantial. But there's, there's no hard and fast rule, and as far as I'm aware, no one's ever really tested whether something was substantial or nonsubstantial.
Thank you, Dylann.
Counselor Sampson?
And Andy.
Thank you. Kind of along those lines, I feel like we all have had this huge deep dive into URAs because of the legislation that, you know, has been going on and the conversation associated whoops with that. So talk to me about other municipalities who have had significant agricultural acreage in a URA prior to 2010 that are looking toward or already have pulled land out for another URA. We heard in the legislation that there's potential for that in a couple of cities. Are there other municipalities that have done this in the state? Do you know of some who may be leading up to it? Talk to me a little bit about that if you could, please.
So the one that I know for sure is the City of Pueblo and the Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority. They're, they're, the 2010 legislation, many of these municipalities that I work with have started URAs after 2010, especially after House Bill 1348. But there's some cities that have been very active with urban renewal for a long period of time, Pueblo being one of them. And so I know an example of just last year where they did a substantial modification, or maybe it had been two years ago, where it was a substantial modification to an urban renewal plan area that was established prior to 2010 that did have agricultural land. So Provision E would have been in play for that. And then I know that they're considering modifications on two other areas, largely because they were larger areas that aren't completely built out, that do have ag land in it. Outside of that, I'm not, off the top of my head, I don't know other municipalities that have that unique situation, or URAs that have that unique situation.
Okay. Thank you. So I don't know if this is allowed or not, Mayor, so, or city manager or city attorney. On Monday, there was a press release made by the city regarding the passage of this plan and oil and gas development on the property. Is that something that we could learn a little bit more about right now or have recapped? I know that isn't necessarily any of yours doing, but it is associated with the passage of this plan, is my understanding. And so I'd like to know a little bit more about it, if I could, please, if anyone can speak to it, if that's appropriate, Mayor.
It's a question. You're asking him to give you a response, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Then that's a question.
Okay. So, take it away, somebody.
Madam Mayor, since we have the developer here tonight, I think it would be appropriate for them to respond to the question.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Counselor Sampson, do you want to maybe just restate your question for us, so we can target it on what you're asking about?
Yeah, I just, well, I think it's, my understanding on the press release was that there wouldn't be oil and gas development. The surface rights would be relinquished to the property included in this URA, should the URA pass, sort of like a contingency. So my question is, is that accurate? And what exactly does that mean to, you know, this URA and to our city? And, and maybe a little bit of talking about what surface rights and, you know, that sort of topic as well, included.
Maybe I could just answer the technical legal questions and then ask Chad McWinnie to speak to what he has and is willing to agree to. So from a mechanic standpoint, the way that this would be achieved would be that there would be an agreement prepared and presented to you at your next regular City Council meeting that would have two parties to it, the city and the relevant McWinnie-affiliated organizations that own the mineral rights in this vicinity. And that agreement would spell out in detail what is being relinquished and what is and isn't allowed within this area. To address the question about surface rights, what we're talking, there was some testimony earlier about the general concept of surface rights versus mineral rights. To be really specific, in the language that was used in your press release, was talking about surface drilling rights, meaning that the McWinnie-affiliated organization that owns the minerals in this area has agreed that they will not seek to access those minerals from within the Centerra South Urban Renewal Plan boundaries, as they were shown to you here, or the pad site that is adjacent to them, that little carve-out notch in the bottom of the quarter section, on which an application was previously filed. So that's the, that is what is being proposed to be relinquished, and that is what would be embodied in a more detailed agreement that would be presented to you at your next regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that news as well.
Okay, all right. Counselor Fogel?
I don't know who to ask the question to, so I'll ask it. Of the urban renewal authorities up and down the front range and any others that you know of in the state of Colorado, how many of them include blighted urban land? Rough number, I don't expect you to know the exact answer.
I'm sorry, can you be more specific about urban land?
Well, of the urban renewal authorities in Colorado, how many are there, you know, how many are there urban renewal authorities? And how many of them include land with blight designation?
Well, all, all of them have a blight designation. You can't include any land unless it is declared blighted. So every single urban renewal plan in the state that has land in it, that land has been declared blighted.
And to answer your first part of the question, Counselor Fogel, it's about 67 municipalities have an urban renewal authority. Our estimate is that there's a little over 150 active plan areas throughout the state.
And the second question, how many of those have done reconstitution of their spaces? Rough number, I don't expect exact.
I couldn't give you a rough number. I don't know. It would be quite a few. I just know from personal anecdote, almost every urban renewal authority I've worked with that has been around for at least 10 years is considering a modification on a plan area.
So we're not reinventing the wheel here?
Not in my opinion.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Counselor Foley?
Thank you. So as I, as I look, and I, I made a, I made a commitment to several citizens to really address and have this talked about, which is where you come up, we've got the public health, safety, morals, and welfare aspect. And when I look at Attachment 10 and go to slide, well, Slide 16 pretty much summarizes it. And as, as we're looking at that, you know, several people have expressed, obviously, a shortage of wage and ability to, to buy, affordability, attainability, even for people that aren't in need of affordable housing. This one really kind of hits the social welfare aspect of that welfare piece that you have to tie in there, of how it's a welfare and a moral issue. And I think lack of affordable housing and lack of attainable housing is definitely a drain and a welfare case and morals case within not only our city but statewide. So is that what your intention is to explain that this is, that's your, that's your welfare piece?
So this is one of the determinations that the City Council needs to make, given that there's open land that's going to be used for residential use. As you've alluded to, Counselor Foley, the public health, safety, morals, and welfare language, that is indicative of the city exercising its police power for what is best for the, for the citizens of the city, for the health, safety, and welfare of the city. The urban renewal statute, and especially to use public funds for redevelopment, development purposes, getting public infrastructure in, remediation of blight has been declared to be a public purpose. And so with these blighting factors existing, a shortage of housing could be something that you find that requires the use of the police power to remediate that blight to you, for the public health, safety, morals, and welfare of the city. So that is one of the findings, and it should be something that you're connecting to make those findings.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Mallow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back to URAs and how many there are. I think we all acknowledge there's tons of them, right? My understanding is there's very few, if not just one other, that was prior to 2010 that has attempted, actually were successful, in taking out a parcel and creating a new URA, and that's Broomfield. Am I right so far? Stop me if I'm not. All right.
As far as we know.
So really, this thing that we're experiencing here has only happened one other time, and Broomfield got approval using Exemption D. Broomfield is both the city and county, so they didn't have to mess with the county, so to speak. And, and School District said, yep, we're backfilled, we're fine. So this hasn't, we have a lot of URAs, tons of them, but this is a pretty unique case. Would you agree to that?
I mean, it's something that is available to, you would have to have an urban renewal area that was approved prior to 2010 that included ag land. So you have to fit those three criteria to even be able to use E. Whether you want to use E or not is, is kind of the prerogative of that City Council. There's been a lot made on, no one's used this provision of the law. There are lots of provisions in the Colorado revised statutes that have not been used. For example, the metropolitan water districts, it's in Title 32, 32-4-401 et sec. It allows cities to make a metropolitan water district to provide water. It has never been used. There are currently zero that exist in the state. I guess, I don't know if it's never been used, but there's currently zero that exist in the state. Perfectly good statute. You could go out tomorrow and form one in the city because you have the power. Statutes on the books are what the General Assembly has passed, and as those laws exist, you can use them. Whether another URA has chosen to or another city has chosen to doesn't dictate whether there's any value or power to the legal authority given to you by the General Assembly, just like if you wanted to do a metropolitan water district under 32-4-401.
Councilman, may I follow up with that?
Yes.
So...
You're going, you're going down the road. I wasn't going down there, but that's okay.
I'm saving you, I guess I'm saving you a second question.
I really don't want to debate E and D.
No, no.
Our state legislature has debated that.
Agreed. I'm not, I'm not referencing that. I just think it's a, a point you were saying, is this a very rare occurrence? And, and I would say that I would agree that it's a rare occurrence, largely from the things that Dalton said, but also because Provision D, which allows consent, in my experience, most of the taxing entities provide consent in these situations. It's a rare occurrence.
On items that were created before 2010. That's my whole question.
Yeah. I mean, in, in my experience, the consent is usually there from all of the taxing entities.
On URAs that were created before 2010, you're saying on, there's only two.
Yeah, sorry. If it was created before 2010, this part of the statute didn't exist. It would have to be a URA passed after 2010 or, or a situation such as this, where you had this, this situation where you had a previous one and something being taken out. But Andy's point is, is, is accurate. When this statute was passed, the legislative history, they talked a lot about, this was before 151348. This was a way to get to the table and say, you're going to come negotiate with us on tax sharing because there was no statute to do that. Ag land inclusion was kind of the first hook in that, and they thought people would be going under D primarily, and it's kind of designed that way. What's happened since 2010 is, I would say, our experience, the experience that Carolyn has shared with this council before, generally, people have gone under D. To use E, you would have to have something that was approved prior to 2010. Ag land was included. You're going forward, and for some reason, you're not using D. And so it just hasn't come up that much, as far as we know. It is kind of a limited set of circumstances that is shrinking by the year as URA plans time out. But generally speaking, I would say D is, has been used more often than not. There's a couple instances where, you know, provisions A and B have been used. There is a case in Arapahoe County about that, or Jefferson County, is with Littleton, so it was one of those two. So, I mean, other provisions have been used. That kind of gets back to the earlier part, point. D is not the only one. The public hearings in 2010 kind of thought D was what would be used, and D has been what has been used primarily.
Really wasn't my question. I didn't want to open the floor to D versus E. That was not my intent. My intent was to describe the fact that there's only one other URA that I know of that was created before 2010 that has tried to take a parcel out or all of it and create a new one.
Yeah, and I don't know how to describe, I apologize, Counselor. I just don't know how to describe that without saying, usually they go under D, and this is why, this is what's happened. I don't, I don't know if anyone else has something to add on that, but you would have to fit the unique set of circumstances, and basically, somebody has to throw up a roadblock on D. As far as I know, no one's done that.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
Mayor, Councilman, if I may, I think we're, we're getting wrapped around a little bit on the different definitions. So you're talking about urban renewal plans, which were created before 2010, where a parcel was removed and then made into a new urban renewal plan. Have I got the question right?
Yes.
With ag land, is that part of the question?
With ag land. That's a given, yes.
And, and we talked about this a little bit the last time that we appeared before you. This is in the packet. It's an email exchange between me and Moses and the mayor. Unfortunately, I did it by attachments, and so I don't have the right numbering. But at any rate, there's three that have done that. It's Arvada, Broomfield, and Pueblo. The Pueblo one was the one that Andy referred to earlier. The Broomfield one was the one that you mentioned, and then there was also one in Arvada. All three of those had ag land that was in an urban renewal plan, and it was approved before 2010, and a piece of that ag land was removed out of the plan and adopted into a new plan.
That was my question.
Okay.
And it's a perfect answer. Thank you. It hasn't happened many. Thank you.
All right. It comes to me, and I have a question for...
All right, it comes to me, and I have a question for Rod Windsor, please, if I could have you come up. So if you'll recall, we had some email exchanges where I asked you, there's the, the parcel that's to the, directly to the west of the Centerra South proposed property is the Chilton Stroh parcel, currently under development, all the apartments going up, it's like 461 apartments, and will have commercial retail along 34. And, you know, I asked you, did they get a URA? Did they get a metro district? Did they get any incentives or fee waivers? And the answer to all of those was no.
Correct.
Okay. So here's my question on that. How do you propose to explain to the property owner and other property owners that they got no breaks, no metro districts, no URAs, they're paying full freight when council approves this? How are you going to explain that?
Madam Mayor, the, at the time, those pieces were not, this project really wasn't contemplated when those were moving forward. They were residential to nature, some commercial. But the, the, the level of infrastructure and the level of public improvements between the two projects are very greatly what's being proposed. So at that level of development, those other, Chilton Stroh, it was more traditional infrastructure, which, which was underneath our, our current regulations. This particular project is a lot more public infrastructure. The intensity is much higher.
Okay, all right, thank you. Better be prepared. Next question is for city attorney. Legally, I'm going to just ask you to affirm, a city council cannot legally approve a resolution or an ordinance that violates federal or state statute. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Those are my two questions. All right, I don't see any other lights on, so we're going to open up public comment on, so there are two motions, only one public comment. So I will open up public comment for persons in chambers first.
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we limit public comment to one hour.
I think that 15 minutes is for study sessions. We already read the first.
There is a motion on the floor, Madam Mayor, and I second it.
No, we only do one at a time, but thanks for asking. All right, so I don't.
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, so you're proposing we limit it to one hour?
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? I don't think we're going to have that much. We don't have that much.
Well, we may not.
Just as a second.
No, I don't think so either. What is it, what is our current rule? Study session's 15 minutes? Is this just unlimited generally?
This is unlimited generally.
Yes, unlimited. Yeah. Okay, so there's a motion and a second to limit public comment to one hour. Roll call, please.
Mallow.
No.
Wilson.
Yes.
Ball.
No.
Foley.
No.
Sampson.
Yes.
Overcash.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
McFall.
Yes.
Marsh.
No.
Madam Mayor, the vote was five to four.
Which way?
Five yes, four no.
Okay, so we limit public comment to one hour. All right, we will, once again, we need to start our hour clock.
Madam Mayor, this is a change to your procedural rules and requires a two-thirds.
Oh, so didn't it pass? So it's not limited. We get to go on as long as people are willing to ask us questions and give commentary.
So you run out of people.
So we will open it up to people inside chambers. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to give public comment to either motion? And the two motions are, the first motion is to extract 138 acres out of a current urban renewal area plan, and the second motion is to create a new Centerra South urban renewal plan.
Madam Mayor, point of clarification.
Okay.
If they've already talked to this.
About the topic.
A topic they would not be allowed to speak again, correct?
On that topic.
Thank you.
Yes, all right. Is there anyone in chambers that wishes to speak to this, either one of the motions?
Yeah, you can just go to the podium when you're ready.
Yes, she gave public comment, but not on the URA.
Yes, she did.
Did you speak on the URA? You have your notes there.
I didn't speak on the URA.
She spoke about behavior of council.
That's right.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Go ahead, give us your name and city of residence.
Nancy Runfeld, Loveland. So it would seem to me, as I've been thinking about this and listening to it, that this all boils down to who controls the narrative, and this applies whether it's politics or business. Whoever controls the narrative controls the issue, the outcome, the money, the results. And what it seems is, is URAs, their original intent, we've so far strayed from it, that now we can have a clump of trees and an old building be considered blight. I don't think that's what taxpayers want their money spent on. We now have people controlling the narrative by saying, if you're, by gaslighting, saying those who opposed the tax subsidies that were anti-growth. Saying that, saying things like claiming Whole Foods is the grocery store that we want while ignoring the fact that most residents can't afford to shop at Whole Foods. It's a great store, but a lot of people can't afford to shop there. Then we have the school districts, which I am very partial to, and I am very protective of that money. So many of these school districts say yes because they're told, never, never will the state not backfill. Which if that's the case, then how did we end up with the negative factor when the state was running out of money? What did the state do? It cut spending at the expense of the classroom. We now have school districts willingly giving their consent to have property tax taken away so that the entire state can fund someone's development, not just this one, any URA development. There's a difference between an area with unsightly blight and a field that has no infrastructure because it was farmland. The intent of urban renewal is to encourage development of belighted. It was never meant to be a blank check tax subsidy for developers. To be honest, the real issue, the only issue, is whose money will be used to build this grand vision? Why use your own money when you could use taxpayer money? And then on top of it this week, you guys are talking about a tax increase so you can get some more fire trucks while you're giving away your tax money. How do you think this is going to play out? We have to do a bond in an MLO, the school district. Do you think the taxpayers are going to be up for that? While we voted to give it away, you guys are voting to give away your tax money? But I guess the good news is, is the students will have a museum that they can go on a field trip to. So I know one last time I am asking you to please, vote no on the South Centerra URA, they're still welcome to develop it. Just go use their own money or find someone else's money to build it with.
All right, thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers from people that have not already commented on the URA?
Good evening. Good evening, Council. Leah Johnson, Ward Two. So I'm here to sing my same housing song, as always. After the 2013 flood, the Urban Land Institute did a study on Loveland's ability to be resilient in the next natural disaster. What that study said is that our greatest challenge was the inability for our first responders to afford a home in Loveland. That was 2013. Fast forward 10 years later to today, our problem has not gotten any better, it's only gotten worse. Seventy-seven percent of our workers drive into Loveland every single day. Those are low-wage and medium-wage workers who are serving our community in various roles, and they cannot afford to live in our community. What we know is every unit of housing that comes online helps solve the problem. We saw it down at the State House. The governor was trying to solve it with 213, while I felt it was a little misguided because I'd rather us solve it right here in our community. And that is exactly what this URA is doing. It is creating, it is using a tool that you have at your disposal to help create more housing. And every unit of housing we get online helps alleviate the problem. That's simple economics. That's supply and demand. The more supply we have, the prices go down and the more people can afford it. Not to mention, McWhinney's are some of the greatest partners when it comes to helping solve this challenge. I know you heard from Jeff Finise from the Housing Authority, they constantly are finding ways to partner with the Housing Authority to create qualified affordable housing. Not to mention with the Kinston Project and their other projects, they're constantly looking at how can we create diversified types of housing that create housing at different price points that people from all across the spectrum in our community can afford? And yes, I know there's the argument that there's additional fees that come with, with metro districts and those sorts of things, but the reality is, if we don't use these tools, these units of housing don't get created, period. It's just the way it is. So it is our responsibility as community leaders to stand up and say, this is the right thing to do. This creates more units of housing, which is what we desperately need, and if you say you are for affordable housing and vote against this, you can't. You cannot say you're for affordable housing and vote against this in Loveland. Because it creates more units of housing that we desperately need for that 77% of people who come into Loveland every day to serve our community. And then a children's museum, it's a great bonus. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
This is not affordable housing they're building. They're doing.
You want to let us know your name and your city of residence?
Oh, Gail Randall, Ward Two. Sorry.
And you do want to address council?
Yes. This isn't affordable housing. This is attainable housing, which they, even the developers say is what they're doing here. And did a little research, someone read some of the jobs earlier. Eighty-eight percent of the jobs that the city of Loveland advertised in recent months, those salaries were not high enough to rent the cheapest apartment. You have to earn at least $60,100 to get in there. All of these people who fix your teeth, take care of you when you're sick, fifth-grade teachers, look on indeed.com, they can't afford these units, not even the cheapest one. So can we stop talking about this is going to solve affordable housing? It is not. And the other thing is, as we've said over and over and over, nobody is against this development. It's a great idea. Do it. Do it like you did in Austin. Do it like you're doing in California. You're not getting URA, you're not getting the taxpayers to subsidize. That's all we're saying. Do whatever you want. It's your property, it's your money. We're against seven people sitting up here and saying, yes, we're going to shove gobs of millions their way. And it's your money, and you have no say in it, and they get it. They're going to get a ton of money upfront when this is passed. They just closed on about $200 million of luxury properties. I guess they need some cash flow. We're just saying, we have a right to have a say in how you guys blow our money. We've got kids in schools, Nancy just talked about it. We've got fourth grade NAEP scores that show they're struggling at the point when they should be thriving and learning all the reading and math skills to get better and better in school and in life. You guys, listen to the public, people are really angry about this. And you guys treat us like we're, we should shut up and go away. This is serious. This is a lot of money. Nobody hate, you know, doesn't, nobody doesn't want them to do what they're going to do. They can do it without us. They don't need us. We need this money in this community. And have they paid off the balloon payment yet? I mean, they owe us money, don't they? Thank you.
All right. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers? All right.
Do I press the green button?
It should already be on.
All right.
So you might want to angle it towards you? Okay, great.
Hello, my name is Becky Schwader, and I live at 940 West 7th Street, and I have been born and raised in this wonderful city. Regarding Centerra South, I've heard the comment, if you don't grow, you will die. However, when is enough growth enough growth? And when does it become overwhelming and irresponsible? To add Centerra South traffic to the Highway 34 corridor would make it overwhelming and irresponsible. Also, where is the traffic study for this project? In 2021, I lost my husband to COVID and spent five weeks driving over to the ICU Greeley COVID unit, down Highway 34 two times a day. When I would get to about Calum, I was like, okay, put on your Mario hat, we're headed into Centerra. My friends outside Loveland asked, what is up with the traffic out there? And all I do is say, too much. Besides the traffic out there, the next issue with URA is formed as how the state in 2010 had said that it can't be put in a new one, and I know that's what we're discussing. Another thing with URA is the test district for the school dollars. Twenty-seven mills out of the 132 million, they said, would give the school 35 million. Seventy-three mills to the URA would be 97 million, and the state would have to backfill. And they say the can't, state can't do that. However, the majority of value are a great. Also, our city is giving 100% tax to the project, but our fire department needs money and is going to ask voters for a sales tax increase. I have an idea, scale back the project to a Whole Foods, children's museum, no URA, and all testing districts get their fair share. I also heard a comment from a city council member about six years of contention on city council. I assume referring to Mayor Marsh's tenure. I would ask city council to remember, it's been the majority of the people of Loveland that have voted her in three more times, and hopefully more. Thank you, Mayor Marsh. I am not very hopeful that my voice will be heard or listened to by the majority of council, also known as the Gang of Sex. I would ask them, the members, to think outside the box they painted themselves into and listen to the majority of citizens, and we would be thrilled. No wonder we are known by county judges and others as a banana republic, a quasi-government within a government. Also, with 7 million from Amazon, could we please get some Christmas decorations by the lake? Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment from inside chambers?
Glory Magrum, Ward Two, former director of House of Neighborly Service. I just want to comment on the Loveland Housing Authority. They house tens of thousands of Loveland residents, very often at 30% of their income, so sliding scale. And I would just say, if Loveland Housing Authority is going to be a part of this, it will be affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers? And you won't be able to speak on the URA, but you can speak on things other, well, no, you can't, this is the only thing, so.
I carefully avoided the URA.
Okay, thank, thank you for remembering.
I could go over my notes if you'd like.
No, 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 thank you for remembering. It's hard for me after having, you know, an hour of public comment.
A lot of people. So I think the reason we're actually here is $155 million. If it weren't for that, everybody's fine.
They're asking for your name and city of residence.
Oh, I'm sorry. Peter Raymond, Ward Four.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, just really quickly, yeah, point of, a point of procedure here, point of, I don't know, whatever. I did make notes about what you said, sir, and it does say that you believe the McWhinney's were advocating for what they are doing, but staff sounds like McWhinney employees, that this is big city, tax rates are higher, if the tax is growing, we need our taxes. I do think that was in relation to this project, was it not?
No, no, I talked about the general procedures that are followed in this. I'll tell, I first, I first introduced myself, and then I thanked the council.
Yes, I have that.
So let me try to clear this up. Did you speak to Centerra South URA plan?
No, I didn't. No, I did not.
Well, the, 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 the plan here is the URA.
I can tell you what I did talk about.
Yeah, I had it written, some things written down. You did speak about the tax, the tax increment financing.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah.
So let me do this, since we might have more public comments. City Attorney, would you review his notes, because he has them all written up, and give us a determination?
Madam Mayor, I also took notes. I will say that he did talk about the McWhinney's and that staff sounded like them during the presentations related to that. However, I think.
It's not about the URA, though, it's.
Well, I think that this is all tied together. However, I would say that you give him the benefit of the doubt.
Okay. All right. Thank you, please.
And just so you know, I wasn't trying to take away your right to speak. I just, we have a rule.
So, can we restart?
When I heard it at the beginning, I went through and I was careful.
So if we could restart, all right. Peter, go ahead.
I had sorted somewhat before I came here.
Peter, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So as I was saying, we're really here about $155 million. And sometimes it's hard to realize how much that is, but that's $2,000 for every person, man, woman, and child in, in this city. So, you know, everybody here is donating $2,000 to this project. Or we could raise it in Vegas. We could send someone to win $1,000 a day for 425 years. So that's what we're talking about. Now, this is a city where we've been rejecting bonds, I recently learned, for 40 years. There's no way that the city voters who are conservative and voted in on the conservative board would actually approve this if it went to vote. And we all know that. And if you look, the project, well, let me skip ahead a little bit. There are 1,000 residential units plus. There are townhomes where there isn't really room for, it's paved around the townhomes because there's parking underneath. There are apartments that have courtyards. The courtyards are parking, parking lots. And there are parking garages, too. So this is not actually a green walkable space. You look at the green space here, we have about 100 feet across the front, we have a little bit less along the sides. And then in the center, over half the width, we have a green walkable space that's about the sizes that buffer in the front, except that it's half as long. So overall, it's about, two-thirds of the green space is unusable and inaccessible. And if you look, there are 34 residential units, but only seven of them front on that, on that walkway. So in reality, lots of green space, lots of green dots, but in a lot of cases, it's not obvious there's room for the sidewalk and the trees. It's not, the money is coming because it's high density, it's urban, it's probably the highest density we've ever seen in the city. But it's not really, that's not the user experience. No, it's wandering around the roads to find the entrance to the parking space. And then if you look, there's also the question, is this really going to work? Because we used to go to malls because it was a destination. Well, the same thing happened at Centerra. We don't do that anymore. And here, some of the retail is hidden behind the stores, no visibility, the traffic on 34 is irrelevant.
All right. Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Good evening. Catherine Bullard, Ward 2. How to begin? I'm confused because so much has been said and there's so many issues. The, the people who spoke for the project here talked a lot of legal stuff. And I don't, you know, some, a couple of you are lawyers. I'm sure not. My dad was, but I don't know whether he would have ever understood this. We have a decision to make. And I think that we need to listen to a lot of different voices. For example, five or six years ago, maybe more, time just kind of goes by in my head, the big thing was downtown renewal. We have a dying downtown. We've got to fix it. And we did some really good things. There's still some vacant spaces. We remember the parking garage and it had its issues. And now we have a, a new thing that we're going to solve the parking problem in downtown. No, we're not. We're not going to solve it at Centerra South either. Whether, no matter how much underground, do you really like to park underground? I don't. And when I think of where I'm living, oh, let's live in Loveland and we'll have just a, just a little place with a little yard and maybe I can put in a garden and, and I'll, I'll have some neighbors, but they won't be so close that I don't have my privacy. That's not going to happen at Centerra South. You know it. There's too many, too many buildings in too little space. And yes, Lee Johnson, I am for responsible, good housing that is, is affordable and it's attainable. And yeah, there'll be some of that, but there won't be a whole lot. It won't solve the problem that people who have jobs here that live outside are wanting to do. So, other things. Someone mentioned Kingston. Kingston, Kingston, yeah, it is. I drove by there a couple of weeks ago. I don't know whether you have, have, I haven't been in, really?
Yeah, your time is up, Kathy. Thank you. Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Matt Floyd, Ward 4. I wanted to respond to one of the earlier public comments, the idea that if you're against this funding mechanism for development of Centerra South, that you're against affordable housing. I think that couldn't be farther from the truth. I think when we look at all of the McWhinney proposals, those proposals have talked about attainable housing, 80 to 120% AMI for the region. So that is not something, literally by definition, that is affordable housing. I also think if it is a true priority of the council for affordable housing, that's something that the council should be working, hell, do it with the McWhinney's, to install it, to build up a public developer that's going to be using land to, to provide housing at an affordable price point now and into the future. It was mentioned that the build out for this development isn't going to be until about 2032. So I think the idea that this is the, the Band-Aid or the cure-all for our housing problems is quite frankly ridiculous. I think we need a huge magnitude of housing bill in order to meet that demand. And this is something that requires not just the market rate, luxury housing, that is almost certainly what's this, this final proposal is going to include. I already, again, just stress my opposition to diverting tax dollars from our schools that is, is going to be paid for either through backfill by all of our states or just, you know, that diversion in a like-for-like development on this property without a URA. That's something that the city never did their due diligence with. And it's again, one of the reasons why nobody is, there are so many public comments where people that don't have some kind of skin in the game are against this proposal because there's all kinds of ways to execute on the goals that this development and this council says that this development is going to achieve without that giveaway to the, you know, to a private developer. And to, one that we've seen with their previous development from Centerra has resulted in less tax revenue than they projected and more costs of services than they projected, which Chad McWhinney admitted, you know, he doesn't have a crystal ball. So these are just numbers. This is nothing set in stone and certain. I think one last thing with my 30 seconds of time, as, as it relates to fracking, we've all, we've seen, you know, some of the wiggly language that they're using with this current Centerra South pad, and maybe that's going to happen, maybe it won't. But I also think that there's never even been anything addressed about the East pad in the Kingston neighborhood. You know, with fracking, you can drill horizontally thousands of feet and there's, there's no word about that and they're still doing on that. So I think that needs to be addressed as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Kat McManus, Ward 2. I am here tonight to speak, of course, on this subject. Thank you all for asking all of your questions and trying to pick this apart because by your asking your questions, by everyone being with the mass concerns that were coming to the table, it's pretty evident that there is not enough information for you all to agree to something like this. And I appreciate you taking the time to consider thinking what might be better for our community than going with this original plan. It apparently has a lot of problems with it. It has housing issues, building issues, fracking issues. We have all of these problems. There is room for development in Loveland. We are developing everywhere and you have been great of choosing those right developments in the right locations. You can make the right decisions to continuously build. Nine years down the road, that's 10 years far. Can you imagine? Give yourselves all 10 years from now. 10 years, that is a very long time to bring up a city, Loveland, who right now is at a prime opportunity to jump on key development areas that are going to not make you question this much, that aren't going to make you go back and forth and bicker at each other. There isn't even a complete plan. They don't even, we're not sure who even may or may not, or if they may or may not frac. We don't know. The unpredictability is what our community is so unsure about and why our concerns and all of your concerns should be very high. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers? Okay, Adriana, are you with us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. User by the name, I'm sorry.
Nope, we'll go to phone in, so thank you.
Thanks. Users, if you'd like to speak to this item, choose to erase your hand feature. Per councils, per councils' policies, you must have your video on during public comment. As the moderator calls on the user's name, please accept the pop-up request on your screen to become a panelist. The meeting will automatically rejoin you as a panelist and you may turn on your video, then begin your public comment. You must be ready to accept the pop-up when no request from the moderator when called on. User by the name James Perkins, please accept this request to become a panelist. James, you may turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead and we can see you.
My name is James Perkins. I live in Ward 2. I'd like to begin by reading the letter I sent to Governor Polis. Goes as follows. I am in support of development and affordable housing in Loveland. I do oppose the McWhinney's taking Loveland City tax money away from schools and essential services and its citizens for 25 years under this scam perpetrated by misguided Loveland City Council members and city manager and attorney. The Centerra South project can be a great project for Loveland. The McWhinney's should provide their own financing, all of it. They should not be ripping away taxpayers' money to finance the project. Governor Polis, please sign SB 273. And help Mayor Jackie Marsh continue her honorable efforts to produce the overwhelming desire of Loveland's citizens, which is no URA for the billionaire Whinney's. That's the end of that letter. I moved to Loveland from another state five years ago. I learned about the McWhinney's in January of this year. Of course, the McWhinney's, who were the developer, under a URA for the Centerra Promenade shops that have turned into a can of worms. A fourth to a third of those shops are empty. The McWhinney's keep getting paid and Loveland taxpayers keep paying on the 25-year obligation that has been extended out more years. For some reason, I think the McWhinney's are responsible for a bunch of our problems with the Promenade shops. I would not choose to do business with this developer going forward because he has proven he will take advantage of us when given the opportunity and he doesn't mind taking our school funds and appears to control our city council. If I were required to do business with this developer, I would consider providing funds, oh, maybe 15 or 20 million dollars, not 155 million dollars. That's outrageous. And I would require that he finish about half of that project, about $500 million worth of work, before I started contributing to this deal. And let's do remember, city council and city manager and city attorney, you work for us. Right, you work for us, not some outside developer. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Is there additional phone-in public comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. User by the name Bob Messero, please accept this request to become a panelist.
And I don't remember the testimony. He read, yeah, I don't think he talked about the URA. Okay, all right. Let's bring up Bob.
You may turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Bob, can you turn on your video?
Do I have notes in everything he said? Am I going to read them? No.
I don't see Bob. There you are. Okay, we can see you.
I will defer to you guys. I was testifying about bringing in a development to attract tourists into the community by emulating what's done in the Williamsburg area and.
You're, you're okay to go on. You don't, yeah, you're good. You're, you're using up your time here.
Okay. Well, it's quick questions. Exactly how many units of affordable housing or attainable housing are going to be put in? I haven't heard an answer to that. Exactly what is the rent going to be for that compared to the salaries in the area? Haven't heard an answer to that. The John Fogel, you said if this, if the county ever asks for a tax increase, you would fight it. Well, guess what? If the city or the school board ever asks for a tax increase, lots of luck when they're giving away the money. You'll never get it. If you're so enthralled with this community, why not let the voters of Loveland actually vote on this URA? Put it up to the ballot, see what happens. I don't think you have the courage to do that, quite honestly, because you know from all of the testimony, you would probably lose that ballot. And the fact that we're going to give away school money, again, that has to be backfilled by the state with no guarantee that the state's going to backfill it because of the budget stabilization factor, and you all should understand that. If the budget isn't there, the state will not give you the money. And because of TAVA, even if they have excess funds, they're going to have to refund those funds. So this thing about the school district being whole all the time is nonsense. It may not happen. And yet that's what you're going down. So I have a lot of time left. I'm not going to take it up. Please ask those questions. Exactly how many affordable housing units are going to be there? What's the rent on those units compared to the average income for those individuals? In other words, can they afford those homes? If you can't ask those questions, just like. just like the other folks have said tonight, you don't know what in the world this development is going to be. You're just voting it in on a prayer, and that should not happen. And I'll close with, go put it on the ballot. See what happens. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening, guys.
Thank you. Is there additional phone-in public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Marsh. User by the name C. Summers, please accept this request to become a panelist. Mr. and Mrs. Summers, you may turn on your video and begin your public comment. I can, can you hear me, Mayor?
I can hear you, but we can't, we don't see or hear. I think you said Mr. and Mrs. Summers?
Or I said Ms., it's just C. Summers.
Oh, okay.
I've asked them to please turn on their video. Not sure if they're having technical difficulties.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. All right, and we can see you.
Thank you. I was having technical difficulties. Carol Summers, Ward 4, thank you. Good evening, council and Mayor Marsh. There's been quite a few comments tonight. I had written a whole litany of information, but I want to speak to Centerra South specifically. I drove on Eisenhower yesterday afternoon, and the traffic was horrific. I know there's a bit of construction going on there for some reason or another, but I would like to know why there's not being a traffic study done. I know that there was a traffic study done in March 21st meeting on the Green Valley Ranch Edition by Randy Masland, and it was done on West 50th Street and 57th Street. It's in the minutes. So I would like to know why there's not going to be a traffic study done on this particular area that's going to affect Eisenhower and the traffic that is going to change when this particular project, if it goes through, is done. I also don't think that it's going to be the tourist attraction that the chamber has pronounced. Driving on the highway on 34, I love looking at the mountains, and I enjoy looking at the scenery, but right now I'm looking at apartments on the left side, apartments on the right side. And I came here for the open space, and I would really like to have a decision on what the green spaces are being developed for. So I want a choice in that decision, and I agree with the county's decision, and I think that the school board acted hastily. I was there at that meeting. And I'm also really upset about the school board's decision, because loss of property tax revenue to our school district and the state of Colorado with, oh, the state's going to backfill is just, just an atrocious fact to me. And I just can't believe that the Thompson School District has the children's best interest, and they're looking out for them. And I just can't believe that that's being ignored. And I'm still really concerned about the fracking issue. I don't think that that's off the table, especially when you talk about, someone brought up the Kingston area. I drove about there the other day myself, just to look at it. And they're still talking about that being done. So there's a concern about that. The affordable housing is another big issue, in my opinion, and just the fact that it doesn't meet city planning. I object to Centerra South, and I would hope that you would take more time, if you are going to approve it, to look at all what the citizens are saying to you.
All right, Carol, thank you.
Thank you.
Adriana, do we have additional phone-in public comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. User by the name Jane, please accept this request to become a panelist. Jane, you may turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Jane, did you already speak? I think you already spoke on the URA project, and that's the only item that's up for discussion right now?
Okay, I wanted to speak to the affordable, or so-called affordable, housing.
No, it's still part of the only, the only public comment allowed at this time, because it's not the open public comment at the beginning of the meeting, is on this item alone, and you kind of covered that in your public comment at the beginning of the meeting. All right. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you very much. Listen to us, guys.
All right. Adriana, do we have additional phone-in public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. User by the name Darren Barrett, please accept this request to Darren, you may turn on your video and begin your public comment.
Good evening. Can you hear and see me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members, lifelong resident Darren Barrett here. I was actually kind of hoping to stay out of this fray that's kind of unfortunately dividing our community into compartments or segments, but I don't envy you your job. All city council members, you got a very difficult job there, and it's been unfortunate the way things are going. But to simplify things, you all just have to answer one question in your own minds. All you have to decide tonight is, the South Centerra area, is it blighted or is it not? That's all you've got to answer. So from my perspective, living here for 60-some years, what I understand of the 2008 blight study, what you're referring to is Old Man Draper's dog kennels on what was used to be County Road 24, which is long since gone. That now is Kendall Parkway with Five Roundabouts in it. It's surrounded by housing development, a new school, and a huge factory that's making delicious Bobo bars 24 hours a day. Normally, out east of that area, there used to be, this might sound familiar to you, a water park that was supposed to be a big tourist attraction. Well, it went bankrupt, the property was abandoned, it became a homeless encampment, and it used to be called Crystal Rapids, but the locals referred it to Crystal Meth Rapids because of the drug use that was there. And it was a blighted area. And in all fairness, the current developer we're talking about tonight stepped in and worked with the Loveland Housing Authority. That place was burned to the ground for a training exercise, and they built the Edge Housing Complex. It was a blighted area, and it was a health hazard. But Centerra South, it's farmland. It's always been a farm. It's been a farm for 100 years. Just to the east is the farmer's ditch. That's why you had to have the buy-in of the water district. So is the South Centerra area a blighted area? Of course it's not. You guys all know that. That's all you've got to figure out tonight. It's as simple as that. So it used to grow a lot of corn out there. Before that, it was sugar beets. For 100 years, it's been that way. There's also always been an oil well out there, ever since I can remember. For 50 years, there's been an oil well out there. If you go to Google Earth and get the overhead satellite view, you can still see an image of it. But the tank and the pump jack that used to be there is not there now. So I don't know how that figures into the equation, but ask yourselves, is the area blighted or not? I know what the answer is, but you're going to have to decide that for yourselves tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Adriana, do we have any additional phone-in public comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not see any more raised hands.
All right, we'll close public comment. And again, the motion that's on the table is to take the 138 acres out of the current Centerra, well, US 34 Crossroads URA plan.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move into council discussion, I'll move to amend motion Resolution 49-2023 to incorporate by reference this evening's general public comment as public testimony for this item.
Second.
What I'm moving is to include, for the record, the testimony given in the original open public comment, to move those comments into this record on this motion, so it's included in the record, all those comments from the earlier open comment section.
Second.
I already did it.
Just clarification.
Probably needs to be in both.
I'll make that separate motion. I'll make that motion next time.
Just clarification for the new guy. So I know, so public comment at the front is not a part of the record?
I'm moving that it's a specific part, not of just that record, but of this testimony given on this particular item. So all public comment given this evening on this item would be included under Item 7.2.
Can I ask why?
Because we only allow them to speak.
It's proper.
Okay.
So it's both public comment sections?
Correct.
Okay.
So it'll be included with what we just heard on the item itself. Many councils will separate them and maybe not even recognize it. So we're recognizing public comment earlier as being included. The mayor's nodding her head, so I think we're in good shape.
I need some clarification, please.
I am trying to.
Are you asking that?
Counselor Olson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Are you asking that a transcript be made of all public comment?
It'd be noted that that public comment has been heard and listened to and applied to this Item 7.2.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Foley, your light is on. Did you have a question about the?
Nope, ready to vote.
All right, this is on the amendment to make sure all public comment on this issue is included.
This is on Item 49-2023, and when we're complete with this, I will be making an additional motion for inclusion. So we're legal.
Roll call, please, on the amendment. Olson?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Overcash?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
McFall?
I don't understand, so I'm going to say no.
Marsh?
No, that's logical.
Mallow?
No.
Madam Mayor, the vote was seven to two. All right, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend, I would like to move to amend the motion regarding Resolution 50.
No, we're not on that item. We're not on it.
At the close of public comment, I'm allowed to at least make that so it's included?
No, we have one motion on the table.
Okay, be noted that I will be bringing that one back.
Yeah, that's fine, but we have one motion on the table. So, all right. So again, this, the first motion is the motion to take the 138 acres out of the current Centerra, US 34 Crossroads Corridor, out. That's the first one. That's all it is. Any discussion on that? Okay. Do you want to read the resolution again as adopted, as amended?
I can only read the first part.
Okay.
A motion to adopt Resolution R. 49-2023 of the Loveland City Council approving a modification to the US 34 Crossroads Corridor renewal plan.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please. Marsh? Yes. Mallow?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Overcash?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the vote was nine to zero. All right, the motion passes, and now we move Counselor Ball to the second motion.
A motion to adopt Resolution R. 50-2023 of the Loveland City Council approving the Centerra South Urban Renewal Plan.
Second.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend.
All right, you are recognized.
I move to amend a motion currently on the table, 50-2023, to incorporate by reference this evening's general public comment as public testimony for this matter.
Second.
All right. So we have to vote on the amendment before we discuss the actual main motion. Is there any comment or questions on the amendment? Seeing none, roll call on the amendment, please. Vogel?
Yes.
McFall?
For reasons already stated, I'm going to say no.
Marsh? Yes. Mallow?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Overcash?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the vote was seven to two. All right, thank you. The amendment passes. Now we are back to the main motion, and I will kind of start by, we're going to do two five-minute, so if somebody can do the clock, each counselor has an opportunity to speak twice for five minutes. You know, I asked our city attorney, you know, if council can legally adopt a resolution or ordinance if it is deemed to violate federal or state law. I believe this one does, and therefore I believe it will be null and void if approved. There are so many areas in which I think it's questionable, whether it's violating 3125-107, specifically using exemption E, which we've heard from the prime sponsors and cosponsors unilaterally have stated that the intention of E was to grandfather in existing URAs at the time, URA plans. It was not intended to be used to take land out and create new. We have heard that over and over again. We gave a public notice for a meeting on March 1st. We gave a public, legally published, public notice to have a meeting on the URA plan for April 18th. However, on April 18th, as stated by our city attorney, the plan would not be reviewed that day. Anyone watching the meeting, anyone attending the meeting, would have had to have been here at 9:00 PM to hear a motion that says we're going to open the discussion and carry it over. I do not believe that meets the requirements of public, published notice. It's not practical to think people had to be watching us at 9:00 PM. All entities have not agreed to the designation of blight. Let's see, the plan has changed repeatedly. I'm still not sure how the city is going to make up for the money not being collected from Laramie County. That has not been. So again, the plan was not ready. Both the House and the Senate have passed clarifying language on the grandfather clause. It's likely that the governor will sign that, so rushing this through is inappropriate. Our Planning Commission did not approve this plan, and they didn't, I don't even think they could have received the plan. So of course they haven't approved. Let's see. I think those are, you know, the reasons, at least some of the reasons why I believe that this is in violation of state law. All right, lights, Counselor Sampson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this has been such an interesting journey. I came into this not supporting what I thought a URA was, and up until actually quite recently, also not supporting what I believed metro districts were and how they were utilized. We have had the opportunity, because of this legislation, to learn even more about how these are used across the state and what a beneficial tool this can be when used correctly. I don't know, I don't talk about it very often, but my background prior to being currently, it's funny, it was mentioned about Indeed.com, but a CNA, a certified nurse's assistant, which is kind of a whole transition in my life, but before that, I was intellectual property patent paralegal. So I didn't prepare cases. I didn't work for, you know, attorneys that had, you know, you know, went to court. I did due diligence. That was my job. I read tons and tons of things legalese. That was my job, find the errors, find the, you know, the things that didn't connect, and bring those to our attorneys, and then also prepare, you know, the patent law piece of it. So I've read a lot about these URAs, and I'm not trying to imply that anyone who has a different opinion hasn't read these things. But in my interpretation of what I've read, I believe that this tool is being used correctly and in a way that will benefit our city. and in a way that will benefit our city. And I see shaking heads, and that's okay, because here's the other piece of this that I think a lot of people are missing, is that this doesn't have to be a massive division in our city. We are seeing a development that in 25 years will be in full build-out. And like it was mentioned, the housing inventory, you know, 1,200 houses, that's significant if it's in five years, you know, four years, something, but over 25 years, that's probably not a huge, huge impact, right? But it is an increase in the inventory overall, which is what we ultimately do need. It's important to me that this build-out, and this will, we'll cover more with the MFA, but that we are ensuring that retail and the things that will cover the expense of the cost of service go into Phase One, and that is the plan for this URA, which is different from what the plan was, the original plan, it's Centerra North. There's been a lot of things that have been addressed in this plan as well that are different from the original Centerra North plan. And I think this is opportunity, I'm grateful for the community that's come out and shared their perspective, I have heard a lot of things that were, you know, not the same information that we received, so I don't know where some of those things came from, but I think it gives an opportunity to have conversation. I also heard things that made me stop and pause and think about, you know, what I wanted out of this as well. For example, the fracking piece, I know there's a lot of people who still have questions about that, I do as well, but I'm very grateful that that conversation has been started, and that there have been moves made to ensure there isn't fracking, or at least surface oil and gas development in this, in this area. If we rewind as a community to like, I don't know, five or six months ago, or maybe even last summer, when it was the application, or the talk of the application was first shared with us, people were losing their minds that there was gonna be surface drilling in that area. So, we can be upset, I guess, about whatever we want to be upset with, but I think recognizing the fact that there are wins in this, we are getting affordable housing, we've had that conversation with Jeff Finice, I've had that conversation, we are getting, you know, stopping or preventing fracking in this area, and I hope that we can continue to come to the table and have further conversations, that will only make our city, you know, better. But I would ask that we set aside, if possible, the personal take on this, there's been a lot of insinuation that those of us who support this do so because there's some ulterior motive, maybe we're receiving something for our support. And I will tell you that I support this because I believe it is the right thing for my children, and because I believe in the model that's been put before us, and I'm willing to go out on that ledge, because I genuinely believe in what I've read and what I've learned, what our experts have told us, what I've learned from other cities and municipalities, what we learned through the legislation that went forward, and I believe that this is the right thing to do for Loveland. So, that being said, I hope that we can take away the personal attacks, if you want to do it, I guess it's your choice, but I think it would be much more productive for our city if we can continue to have the conversations without those. In the meantime, I do support this project, and I'm grateful for the conversation we've had thus far.
Counselor Overcash.
Andrea, or Counselor Sampson, thank you for your comments, I can agree with almost everything you said, actually, I'll just say everything you said. Well, I think, I think it goes without, it goes without saying, there's, there's gonna be some disagreement, I think really a lot of the disagreement that's running around this is, is coming down to financing, I hear that as a bucket, I hear some other things that I think are more excuses than maybe what's behind it, and it's fine to disagree on financing. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this project, and I'm very pleased to have been able to spend the time working with city staff and the McWhinney team as far as the study review team, because I've seen a lot of good come out of that negotiating, that, that process, which eventually our negotiators work with, but the conversation around housing, that wasn't there initially, the way it is now. The conversation around the fracking concern, that conversation wasn't part of the original discussion. And what we're looking at at this point is a project that is going to be, that's in essence self-funded. It's gonna be funded by the people who decide to shop there, just like the project at 2534 is funded by the people in Loveland who decide to shop there, it's their right. It's gonna be funded by the, the people who decide to live there. So someone in Ward 1, 2, or 4 that doesn't want to live in that particular project, none of their income is gonna be allocated to, to paying for this project. And it's gonna be supported by the businesses that decide to locate there, their choice, and they're gonna be, and it's their money, the incremental tax that's collected, that's paying for it. So this taking money from one to the other, it's, 100% of zero, isn't nearly as good as, say, 50% or 60% of whatever the agreements are with the various taxing bodies. And to assume that something is automatically going to happen, that's a matter of opinion. What we have in front of us is a proposal that will happen, and it'll happen because we're going to commit around 14.7% of the, of the total project cost, $1,049 million, public improvements and infrastructure, that's the only thing that the money collected is gonna be used for, is gonna be used to pay for infrastructure, which becomes the property of the city. So if someone has another way of financing that, I would like to know, because if it's financed in this method, we're maintaining property values lower. Eventually, yes, it's gonna be paid, but that's over 25 years. And if we were not to finance it and said, you gotta come up with this other, for the public improvements, that's gonna improve, that's gonna increase property values on each lot almost immediately. Regarding affordable housing, this was not on the table before, what was on the table in early discussions was over 1,100, 1,200 doors, is how it was referred to. And now we know there's discussions, but more importantly, we've been able to define how this project is going to contribute to the continuum of housing. It's providing for rental, it's providing for multifamily, people can move into that, it's providing a small number, really, I think only around 100 single-family residences out of that total. So minimally, it's addressing the supply and demand challenge that we're all faced, a continuum of housing. And I'm delighted to hear that, and I, and when, when McWhinney Firm and Loveland Housing Authority have a great working relationship, and to be starting this early, talking about that, that to me is, is commendable, because that's a very difficult market to fill. I don't know how they'll do it, but I'm sure there's gonna be some way, this project's gonna result in more housing within that lower than 80 to 120. And I'm also looking forward to the opportunity in this project, as we're getting into that part of the discussion in a couple of weeks, well, what are the public improvements? Well, we have a say what those public improvements are, and city staff has been working on that, and the infrastructure cost for the roads and the highways, what's gonna have to be done in 34, is far different than a car dealership on the corner lot, it's gonna be monumental. And they're working on pulling that data together, so at the appropriate time, it'll be presented. But we're gonna be able to incorporate and know that list, we're gonna know what we're buying, and we're gonna have a firm understanding of what that list is, and that might include things like the annex for the police department. We've been talking to substation, I won't talk in the next one, and it'll include perhaps a library services.
We're gonna get a motion and a vote of council to change how we.
I am fully in support of this project, that's all the comments I have this evening on it, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. As one of two counselors involved since January in the negotiation process, I've gotten a real education. The process is really complex. There is a lot of comment about us rushing this project through. Well, we're actually progressing on a schedule that was initially prepared back in January, and it actually slipped. So we're not rushing, we're actually behind from our original schedule. Now that the mayor made an effort to enlist the participation of Laramie County, a state senator, and a state representative to rush legislation through in record time for a land use issue, to derail this project only served to illustrate the importance of getting this before council. Yes?
Counselor, it is totally inappropriate.
That's your behavior, it's your behavior.
Are you calling the point of order, Madam Mayor?
I am, I am saying that per Roberts' rules, you do not attack your fellow counsel.
Did not attack, I simply expressed your behavior.
You are making accusations, unfounded accusations.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Unfounded accusations.
They are founded.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Yes, what is your point of order?
My point of order is that you are out of line by jumping in the middle of this without calling a point of order yourself. You have to call a point of order.
Fine, okay.
If you call a point of order, then it will be up to Counselor Overcash to decide.
Point of order, Counselor Olson, do not make personal attacks, do not, and, and, you know, say that something, somebody did something that you don't know. I don't think I have to call a point of order, I think I just correct if people are not behaving appropriately, and accusing anybody of anything is inappropriate. Yes, please.
So, Madam Mayor, I would respond that under Roberts' rules, you are not to make personal attacks.
Yes.
Or insinuations about motive.
Yes, thank you.
Can I finish?
I don't have to do a point of order.
As is projects involved, those in opposition can and have made many accusations as though they were fact. The misinformation out there's been huge. Well, in negotiations, those that are involved cannot talk about the process that's been made. Many people interpreted this as we're not being transparent and that we're hiding things. Despite many presentations on all aspects of the project, the costs, the negotiation with taxing entities, the participation by all taxing entities, the same misconceptions continue to circulate. For instance, taxpayer money is being used to fund this project. People seem to refuse to understand that any taxes contribute to this project can only be used for public improvements, only be used for public improvements, it cannot be used for the development. Also, only those that live, work, shop, and play will have any of their tax dollars directed to the project. If you don't want your tax dollars to go to Centerra South, don't live there, don't shop there, don't work there, don't play there, it's simple. We have a lot of people that are wringing their hands about money being taken from the students. The development will be subject to state sales tax, any money the state backfills will be more than made up by the sales tax collected by the state. Also, just as a note, this is not the appropriate time for a traffic study, that'll be presented down the road. There is no tax money to take, there is no tax money to take.
No, 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 sorry, no, no public comment.
The development has to be successful in order for there to be any taxes. So, right now, $2,800 in taxes for 140 acres, it's all that's being generated by that property. It's been my experience that there's a segment of population that opposes Centerra South, and there's nothing we can do to say, change their mind. They will continue to accuse council of being in pockets of the developer, they will continue to assert that we don't have the best interests of the citizens in mind, they will continue to despite that, the meeting of five of 10 criteria regarding blight, that the consultant's wrong. There's another segment of the population that supports the project, and we don't have to do a whole lot to convince them of the merits of the, of the project. There's another segment, that's those that are kinda in the middle, they haven't made up their minds, and that's the ones we're really trying to spend a lot of time and effort to educate them.
Counselor Olson, your time is up.
Point of procedure. During the argument up on the dais on whether it was a point of order or not, the clock continued to run.
I thought it was turned off.
No, it continued to run, Madam Mayor.
Did it, did it, Dylan?
Can I just, I got just a sentence to.
I'm just asking Dylan, because I thought I saw the.
I think it might have, because I was trying to capture the conversation.
Okay, all right, so we'll give, yep, go ahead, continue.
Okay, I had one sentence left. Basically, there's a segment, a third segment, that is out there that's kind of the undecided. And that's where, from my perspective, that we're trying to provide factual, accurate information for people devoid of emotion to allow them to make an informed decision. My perspective is that ag lands and blight are not the issue, it's more along who's the developer. So, that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you, Counselor McFall.
So I, I appreciate a lot of things that Counselor Sampson said, because I walked into this, in fact, I walked into City Hall and this dais, not really being a fan of metro districts and/or, and didn't know anything about URAs, so now I know more about URAs than I ever wanted to know in my life, and I've dreamed about them, and I hate that, because I don't like those dreams, they're just terrible dreams, in and of itself. But with that said, I sat on the planning commission for seven years, I'm not gonna sit down, and I'm not gonna question what the planning commissioners did in itself, but I can say this, in looking at and following the rules that I felt were set up on the planning commission itself, I feel this meets our comprehensive plan, in and of itself, the way it sits. And I looked at that, and I tried to decide it. You know, when it comes to the law itself, I, I sat down and looked at that, and when I first started looking at this, I, I thought like others did, that it was ambiguous, and I look at the amendment that's been put through, and, you know, I think the mayor made a comment that, you know, the amendment, it's passed the Senate, it's passed the House, it hasn't been signed, it's not a law yet, nobody knows for a fact whether the governor's gonna sign it or not, nobody knows when he's gonna sign it, if he does sign it. Right now, we're required, required by our oaths to follow the laws of this country, this state, and the ordinances in this city. Current law on the books right now is the one that we're looking at in here, people can disagree with it, you can read into it whatever you want to. I firmly believe that the amendment that was put on this law is gonna do harm not only to the city, but other cities and communities around this state. Because the question that a lot of people didn't ask is, okay, we have, I think, what the representative said was about 160 URA plans that are out there in this city right now, in this state right now. With this law, the way that it was written, if it is passed, what do you do with that ag land when the URA runs out? You can't use it for anything, it just sits there. So now you've got a planned community where you've got ag land that's sitting around it, and I know some will say, well, just have a developer come in and do it. So now you get a hodgepodge of developments in there, which ruins it, in my mind, ruins a planned community in and of itself. And looking at that, I've sat through as much testimony as everybody else here, I've asked a lot of questions, I've had separate conversations, I've looked at a lot of things out there, and I, I agree with Counselor Sampson on this, I think this is good for this city, I think it's good for our community. I've sat down and looked at, okay, what are we doing here? And I think, you know, some of the other counselors have said, you know, there's gonna be more money back on this. I look at the lot the way it sits today, $118,000 a year, over 25 years, split up amongst 12 taxing entities, at 3%. $212 million a year, if that's the way it ends up, over $212 million split up amongst those entities, I think, I think the dollars and cents actually balance out for me. You don't have to agree with me, I just believe I'm doing what is good here. I think the thing, and, and I look at this, that just the, the split that this has caused in our community, and you see it here tonight. I mean, we, we have folks that sit before us and say, treat people nice, treat people nice, but when somebody comes up and disagrees with them, there's snickers, there's laughs, there's shout-outs, whatever you may do in there. Think about what we're doing to ourselves in this community, think about where we're at, there's, I've said this before, I'll say it again, there's not a damn thing wrong with disagreeing with somebody, it's the way you do it that really makes it wrong. And I think we should all look at ourselves and understand what we're doing in here. With that said, as far as I'm concerned, I support this.
All right, Counselor Vogel.
I want to thank Counselor Overcash and Counselor Olson for the hundreds of hours of extra time they've spent dealing with this, dealing with this issue, the presentations from the developer, the presentations from staff, the presentation from layers of lawyers. And I can sympathize, because the reason that I backed away and let Counselor Olson represent Ward 3, and by the way, this new development is Ward 3, the reason I let him do Ward 3 without any contest whatsoever, is because I've done a URA in Loveland before. You all know exactly where that URA is, but you really don't think about it very much. Loveland's downtown URA is largely responsible for the foundry, the financing mechanisms that provide money for the DDA on an ongoing basis for the last six years. It didn't get advertised as a URA, it's not on the billboards, but it is the Loveland Urban Renewal Authority. Urban Renewal Authority. And two weeks ago, we folded that Urban Renewal Authority, because it no longer serves a purpose. We folded that Urban Renewal Authority into the DDA. So, when you talk about projects, this project, I can compare it to our downtown project, not in scale, not in scope, not in dollar amounts, but I will guarantee you that whatever they tell us today will not occur. We didn't plan on hitting water when we drilled holes in downtown Loveland. We didn't plan on running into tanks every 15 feet as we were digging holes. And they will run across things that they're not planning on either. But the key to doing this sort of a development is to have a developer you can trust, a developer that has the wherewithal, the backing, and the financial backing to fix things when they go wrong. And I guarantee you, something will go wrong. That is how development works. It just happens. So, I'm perfectly content knowing that we are choosing a developer that we have a proven track record with. You know what happens with a McQuinney project when it comes into the city? Any project, their buildings, their commercial buildings, everything else. Our Development Services Group only has to look at it for a short period of time, because they know that everything in that development will be built to 140% of the standards that we call here at the city. They go over and above. If it needs X, they do X plus four, X plus two, in everything that they have built since the day they started. And it's evidenced when you pull off the highway on Highway 34. You see any weeds? It's been a long time since I've seen a weed out there. The other thing to keep in mind, when it's Christmas time, that thing lights up like Las Vegas, because it's Loveland, and they're proud of their heritage sharing Loveland. You don't run down and look at the lights in Centerra and see half the light bulbs out? It just doesn't occur in their line of thinking. So, as we, as we move towards this, okay, keep in mind that we have done this before. The Foundry project is a URA project. URA money up until two weeks ago was paying the payments on the Foundry's parking garage. It was paying the payments on the grass that sits in the Foundry. It was paying the payments on the concrete that sits in the Foundry. It was all part of a URA. It just wasn't that obvious, but it was that successful. The people of Loveland can congregate in the downtown, in the Foundry Plaza. We throw parties down there. We have kids sitting on the grass. We have bands playing, people having a cocktail, and life is good in Loveland. Because we used a URA mechanism to make it happen. And I think, the other one I want to thank for that is Dave Clark, who sat with me in the same situation on the Foundry project that Steve and Don just did on this project. Hundreds of hours of extra work. I thank you both for your service to our community, and absolutely support the project. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Mallow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me get my papers out of the way. As I've said in the past, I oppose this, and the reason I oppose it is quite simply, I can't get to first base on it. You know, there's a lot of numbers involved, a lot of financing, all that stuff, it's good, but I can't get to that point, because I can't get past first base. But before I get to first base, I need to talk about some caveats here, because I don't want to get blamed for some things here. I'm not opposed to development, that should be a given. I'm not anti-McQuinney. I don't even know them. They seem to be nice guys. I'm not opposed to the project. I'm opposed to the, to the process and its financing. Plain and simple. And to get to that process and financing, you have to, you have to determine that's blight. I've been schooled on, on a traffic study. They do come later. I did talk to the department involved, and they got some very preliminary information. Suffice it to say, there's going to be more cars, right? Everyone agrees, more cars on 34, and exits on I-25, the burger place isn't going to help, but, you know, but there's ways around that. You put in a lane, you put in a turning lane, you put an exit lane in, and you can fix that. So, I'm not too worried about that. Now, this Planning Commission issue, please don't throw these folks under the bus, please don't. There's already been some comments that they didn't understand, or they weren't instructed right, et cetera, but you can, you can throw, you can decide on your own whether or not you want to factor that in or not. I am going to factor it in, it's not elimination, because again, I can't get to first base. And this land, I guess I've said this before, I'll repeat myself, but 20 years ago, a URA, this development, everything that took place 20 years ago was, was needed. I'm sure it was. I wasn't here, but it was probably needed. Needed by the McQuinneys, needed by us, we partnered up, we did a pretty good job over the years. We can determine and argue about if we made money or not. You can all do that individually. But this land will be developed, and I hope it's with this project, just not with this financing. Want to talk about, I guess I did talk about first base. What I mean by first base is, is the urban renewal law and its legislative declaration. I will submit that there is not a serious and growing menace out there. I will submit it's not injurious to the public health, safety, morals, and welfare of residents. It does not contribute to the spread of disease and crime, and it's not urban, and it's not blighted. It's farm, plain and simple. I don't know, if you believe otherwise, you're, the end is, the end is justifying the means. And if that's the way you feel, you have a right to do that, but I can't get past that. It is not blighted. I'm not going to go through the urban blight factors again. I made a big deal about the barn, and I'm not going to bore you with all that, but there has been some comments lately about, it's not even prime farmland. Well, that's a matter of opinion. I would say, take this plot of land and take it out to eastern Colorado, they would love to have this piece of farmland. There's, I'm sure McQuinney, they could have grown a lot of crops, and I heard someone say they did, and then I heard somebody say they never, never did. It's only plowed to get rid of the rodents off the, off the dry land. I'm just saying, don't pick on my farm. I mean, it's a farm. And, and, and it's hurtful, no, they shouldn't go that way, but. Affordable housing, let me touch base on that a little bit. I went through a lot of, lot of correspondence about what the plans are for, for the rents out here. Loveland Housing Authority will be involved in apartments, so I'm not even going to talk about housing, or, excuse me, houses, homes. We have some correspondence here from, from the McQuinneys saying attainable housing are homes or apartments affordable at 88, 120%. Now, in the letter to Polis, that I won't get into, it said that there's, let me find it.
Counselor Mallow, you're about to run out of town time, maybe pick it up on your second.
I will.
Okay.
Yep, good, I can find that.
Yeah, that gives you a chance. All right, Counselor Foley.
Thank you. This land has already been deemed blighted, and it's the city's job to determine blight. And the city of Loveland has determined this land to be blighted before, and nothing has changed with this land, and now we're going to determine it is not blighted. And in my opinion, that's a liability to us as the citizens and the city as a whole. There's been a ton of talk about prime ag land. This is located within the city limits, and in the city limits, cities are for non-egg, they're non-egg in nature, okay? It's in the city limits, it's in an economic development corridor as well. Imagine, and I'll say it again, imagine if we put a dairy farm, a hog farm, or a feedlot in there right now, could you imagine everybody's complaints, everybody talking about air quality and smell and everything else, not to mention all the farm traffic that would go with that? You see, when I look at this, and I look at, there's a lot of talk about the current Centerra as well, and when I look out there, I see housing. I want more of that. You see people working to provide for themselves and their families. You know what? I want more of that. You see new schools. You know what? I want more of that. You see new fire stations. I want more of that. You see affordable housing. I want more of that. To determine blight, this really hits a big factor in there, which is dealing with the social welfare, that I've been trying to say, I said it at the state, I've said it at council, and I've said it during the URA meetings as well, is we have a welfare and moral problem, and I asked the question tonight as well to, to put the nail in that, in that box. We have to remove these roadblocks to help move these projects on and move them along to help with dealing with our social blight. That's dealing, when you talk about kids and everyone else, if a kid doesn't have an affordable house to live in, it doesn't matter the education that they get, because the school system becomes a daycare, or a babysitter, or a social welfare program instead of what it should be, which is teaching people the basics of how to learn. So, I am absolutely for this project, and as we look at, as this project comes to fruition, it's going to continue through the city processes, like the traffic studies, code reviews, et cetera. So, that's all I've got. And with that, I'm going to call a question.
We agreed to two rounds.
I'll call a question.
Second.
Roll call.
Can I ask a question?
I don't know if you can.
Oh, there's no discussion on calling for the question, you're right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can I?
Roll call, please.
McFaul.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the city attorney for clarification as to whether or not you can in fact call the question.
Yeah, we haven't even heard from everybody.
Madam Mayor, typically you would hear from everyone before you called the question, and normally I would say, still you could call the question, except you have a current motion that allows for two rounds, so unless you override that motion first and change that.
I will, sure, I'm going to call the question.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm still going to say no.
So, we are ready to start round two. No, you have us. Okay, all right, so, round, okay, so, round two, I have Counselor Olson.
Are you running down the list, or do I get to go?
Well, I try, yeah, you were first on the round two.
Okay, thank you. I don't have much. I arrived in Colorado about 24 years ago, following my retirement from the Navy. It was fulfillment of a dream. I saw the mountains for the first time, moving from Minnesota to spend a career in the Navy, and I was just in awe of the beauty of Colorado. And so I chose to live here, and I also, having spent 29 years serving my country, I felt I needed to serve my community. And so within six months of my arrival, I got on the Planning Commission. And interestingly, one of the first projects that I participated in was Centerra. I was struck by what I will say is the elegance of the plan. I had, you know, spent, not, I hadn't been here that long, but traveling up from 120th Street up to Wyoming border, it was pretty barren, and actually, not much traffic on the highway. And to see a development that wasn't just this hodgepodge of a little of this, you know, fast food restaurant here, a gas station there, maybe a Home Depot here, but a community that was actually planned, I thought, now this is really something. If it can be pulled off, it's going to be a beauty. And I think what we have out there at Centerra is a beauty, it's a jewel. No community has an entryway like Loveland. It's, I would say, again, it's elegant, and so, this Centerra South is going to just even embrace that, it's going to be both sides of the highway, that we're going to have an excellent, beautiful entryway into our community, and no others will have anything like it. There's a lot of statements made about school. The school district here in Colorado has benefited tremendously from Centerra. They contributed $1 million for the expansion of Mountain View High School. They put in 16.4 million for the construction of High Plains School. They put in 15.5 million for the expansion of High Plains School. That's public improvement, folks, and that's where the tax dollars go that, that are for developments in Terra North in that case, and for Centerra South. Those tax dollars go back to benefit, it's the infrastructure, it's the parks, it's the sidewalks, it's the electrical. That's the only thing that those public, those tax dollars can be useful. And so, from my standing point, having spent 50 years in business and financial analysis, it's an investment. We invest collectively, not just the city of Loveland, but collectively, $155 million, less than that now since the county's not involved, and we get a billion-dollar project in return, a billion dollars in property value in return. To me, it's, it's just a wise decision, it's a great investment, so I fully support this project.
All right, thank you. You know, we frequently hear the phrase all the time, we are a full-service city. We provide police, we provide fire, trash collection, recycle center, library, theater, full-service city. Well, that costs money. So when you say a development that's not contributing the full share of other areas in town is not going to cost the everyday citizens, we have to provide those services citywide, all over, this new development, existing developments. We collect 9.56 mills on property tax, we collect 3% sales tax, and that's what we, we say we need, in fact, we frequently say we're not collecting enough, and we need to increase our sales tax. Several times, there've been tips, just in the five years I've been on council, to raise sales tax, because we don't have enough. We currently have a need to build a transit bus station. We do not have the $3.5 million to build it. So we're going to build the driveway, but no building. It took us seven, eight years to come up with the funds, and we still haven't quite figured it out, on the pulleyum, a building that we've owned since, what, 1930 something, '39, that needed upgrading to meet ADA requirements, what, the last 30 years? We don't have the money for it. You know, we're full service, open lands, parks, rec, all of these things, and it takes all of our 9.56 mills on property tax, it takes all of our 3% sales tax, and yet we have people who think we're not charging enough, and we need to increase that. So, I, I look at it, what I hear every day is we don't have enough, we're not collecting enough. So to have an area of town that we are going to collect no mills on property tax, and I'm not even sure what the current proposal is on sales tax, it was, we were going to collect 1.75, but I'm hearing that may drop to 1.25, because we have to make up the, the difference in the county. So, you know, everybody in the city should be asking, well, why are we paying 3% everywhere else, and why are we paying property tax mills if we don't need it? That's a question everybody should ask. All right, let's see, Counselor Fogel, trying to keep up with everybody here.
Reset my clock. I told you about the Foundry. That was Loveland Urban Renewal Authority, the same Loveland Urban Renewal Authority that encompasses Centerra North, the same physical structure. But, just like we're taking- But just like we're taking a chunk, or proposing to take a chunk of the North Centerra group and move it into a new group, the Foundry was a separate group. It was, it was a separate group when it was created, along with a good-sized chunk of downtown Loveland. That good-sized chunk of downtown Loveland has been benefiting, profiting, growing, and being developed with urban renewal money for years, years and years. Now, everybody goes, well, how many more of these there are? Well, there is one more. Every one of you knows where it's at, but you don't think about it. Anybody ever heard of Lincoln Place? Lincoln Place is the Findlay block of the downtown Loveland Urban Renewal Authority. That entire complex, including, I have no idea how many apartments, is Urban Renewal Authority. It was since the day it was built. So urban renewal authorities work in Loveland. They simply work. Then everybody goes, the next thing everybody's going to jump up and down about for me is, well, but it's not farmland. We had a fleet of lawyers tell us that it is farmland and it is blighted. We had a fleet of experts working for those lawyers and working for different companies tell us that it is farmland and it is blighted and what we're doing is legal. And what we're doing is proper and legal. And we had our own state senator acknowledge that it's urban, it's, it's urban renewal authority, it's blighted, and it's farmland. She acknowledged it for us. Because if she wasn't acknowledging that it's farmland, what purpose in the world did these thousands of hours that that group has spent trying to unwind it from being farmland serve? We've involved our entire state legislature, both houses, all trying to unwind the, the current law, because they didn't like it. Well, if it wasn't blighted farmland, why bother? Our own state legislator acknowledged for us that it is blighted farmland. It was blighted farmland back in 2008, when it was put in the group, when it was put in the property. It still is today, it will be tomorrow. And again, if there was ever a reason to support this project, our state senator for SD 15, Janice Marchman, gave us the exact reason to do it. Because she, above everybody else, acknowledged that it is blighted farmland. If she wasn't doing that, then I'd be very angry if I was in the state legislature, because she just wasted a week or two of my time as a state legislature, as a state legislator, bringing phony stuff up and saying, we, we want to change this. So again, think about it. If it wasn't blighted farmland, what purpose did that magnificent exercise down at the State House serve? The answer's nothing. It was blighted farmland, or they wouldn't have bothered. I support the project, still support it. Thank you.
Counselor Overcash.
Yeah, I changed my mind, but I will keep this one well within five minutes. First, I'd like to thank the number of people who have been speaking against this project for several months. It's probably 25 to 30 who have made themselves quite known to us repeatedly, through email, text messaging, commenting here at city council. I appreciate that because you've helped us do a better job telling the story, as well as working with the developer to make sure we addressed real concerns that individuals had. So even though we disagree, you made me better at working the process. I would also like to thank well over 50 individuals who just last week made verbal text or email comments to me upon the publishing of my opinion piece, which I stand by. I really appreciate those comments, they came in rather quickly, and I wanted everyone to know that they've been listened to. But there's one thing that I didn't plan on saying, because I've been trying to stay pretty positive on this, but I'm a little disappointed that just a few minutes ago, somebody was talking about sales tax. And during, just a couple of years ago, we had an initiative for the first time in 30 years for an increase. Because we were given information, we formed a subcommittee, and eventually council voted eight to one to move forward with the sales tax recommendation to the city. And we even articulated how it would be used. Certain amount on capital needs, because at that time we're 500 million dollars plus behind, and we identified the other areas, including public safety. During that time period, the statement became rather famous, the city was awash in money. There was no need for this sales tax. And now tonight I hear that there's a need. I'm not sure which it is. I'm glad we got through COVID the way we did. I'm very disappointed that we're falling further behind on projects. And this particular project, that where the tax dollar increment is going to pay for the infrastructure, helps us improve the committee without a sales tax increase across the rest of the community. Yes, it's tight, and it's going to remain tight, but that was the will of the public. So I continue to support this project, and I do appreciate, again, all those people who have commented, one way or the other, they've made themselves known and they've been listened to. So thank you.
Counselor Mallow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me close my thought on affordable housing. Actually, funny I should say that, we're not even talking about affordable housing yet. In the letter to the, to the governor, it was stated that it's going to provide, the development's going to provide 1,200 of attainable workforce housing. And then as a response to the mayor's question about what's going to be built and purchase prices and et cetera, et cetera, attainable housing, our homes or apartments affordable to the 80% to 120% AMI. Again, attainable. We're not even too affordable yet, and, and I got a chart in front of me, I'm not going to bore you with numbers, but there's a big difference between 60 and 80%. 60 is affordable housing by most definitions, 80% could be in the attainable range. So, you know, maybe thoughts will change, maybe goals will change, but right now, we haven't even entered into affordable, nothing, a lot of talk about affordable housing, but the developer doesn't even think they're going to get the affordable housing. So I hope they do. I hope they get to 60. But we're not there yet.
All right, seeing no other lights. Counselor McFaul, if you could please reread the motion as amended.
A motion to adopt Resolution R 502023 of the Loveland City Council approving the Centerra South Urban Renewal Plan as amended.
All right, roll call, please. Overcash.
Yes.
Fogel.
Yes.
McFaul.
Yes.
Marsh.
No.
Mallow.
No.
Olson.
Yes.
McFaul.
Yes.
Foley.
Yes.
Sampson.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the vote was seven to two. Thank you, that motion passes. There were no items removed from consent agenda, we move on to reports, reports from city council. This is an opportunity for council members to report on recent activities. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report? Counselor Olson.
Yes, just real quick, last Wednesday I sat in on a series of interviews that the AC conducted, looking for the, the new group that's coming in next year. As I recall, they had nine individuals that applied, they had six openings, so they selected six of those individuals as the primary representative, and the others became alternates. Amazing how, how well they did, you know, they are our future, and they did a great job. Secondly, last, yeah, last night, the Affordable Housing Commission conducted reviews and, of some presentations on the Community Development Block Grants. And they, you know, we've got to appreciate the effort and the time and the dedication that our commissioners put in. They did a great job. They were very thorough, they asked great questions, they deliberated for a considerable amount of time to come up with the recommendations that they're going to make to council. So I just have to say, I got a really amazing group of people on, on that commission. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Counselor Sampson.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of visiting our Amazon warehouse this, this past week. It's massive, it's what, 3 million square feet, is that what it is, Steve? 3.8 million. They started talking to us a little bit about, on the tour, about how their robots work. And they're, yeah, it's like takeover, they have this thing called the Green Mile, which is this area that's like taped off so that if the robots go rogue, they won't go into the, it's insane. It's great. But honestly, though, it's a very cool project. And it's really cool that Amazon chose Loveland. I think a lot of what, they, they said that they specifically like looked at this region, but that Loveland was their choice because the land was available and the housing, you know, met the needs of the people that were living there and whatever, all these other things. Oh, and the, and the workforce also as well, the workforce talent. So that was interesting. But I did catch myself thinking while we were driving through there on these little cute little carts, wow, wouldn't it be cool if they had like a park here or something like that? Like, wouldn't it be neat if they had, oh yeah, public amenities? Oh no, because they didn't ask for any public dollars. I'll just say. But that's it, it was really cool tour.
Yes, no URAs, no metro districts, no fee waivers, nothing.
And no public amenities either.
And all the infrastructure. Counselor Fogel.
I think that as council, I want to make sure that councillors are aware to watch your mail, because I'm getting hit daily with, with updates from CML about what's going on down at the legislature. And it's getting a wee bit crazy. So if I'm blasting you with multiple emails, I apologize ahead of time, please read them. The most important that's out there right now is Senate Bill 213, which is the one that seeks to preempt our right to control our own zoning. That, that one is moving forward, it gets amended hourly, who knows where that's going to go? CML had, had switched to, they were going to approve it. And then they made 17 amendments, and now they're not. I mean, they supported, excuse me. And now they're not. They're supporting it only if they take all the amendments away. So this, the legislative landscape is changing daily, hourly, and at a reck, at what I consider a reckless speed. So I'll try to keep you as up to date as I can. Read your mail. Thank you.
All right, thank you. City manager report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have on the item for me to discuss tonight is the Rule of Four on a motion that was made on March 21st, 2023 regarding to have staff look at the feasibility of expediting the building of a regional community park in the area of the northwest region of the city of Loveland. And that request was to fill out a scorecard, which is a matter of record now, it's been attached the last couple of times we've tried to get to it on your packet. It talks about the fact that we're underway to start construction of our other project now, which is the Willow Bend Park. And that is looking to get started late in 2023 this year, and finishing late next year. And the funds and everything that have been saved up for that, plus the grant monies are in that queue. If council so directs staff to look at another project up on the northwest side of town, we would either need to bring more staff in to look at other options, or to delay the projects that's under grant-funded and city-funded monies now, and do that at a later date. They're looking at about a $35 million project for this regional park, that's about what they've been running at. But they haven't started scoping or any other activity at this point, and they're concerned about the phasing of this versus the phasing of starting up another whole scoping session, new work on another park system at this point in time. So they don't have money to do both, and they don't have staff to do both. So does council, council want to have all this scoping and things done for a new park now? Or are they willing to wait at least a little while till we can get the other park finished? So that's kind of, that's what their request is with the Rule of Four.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
If, if you can wave your magic wand and you get all the scoping and all the planning and everything done, do you have the money to build it?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that project took us a couple of years to put together the funding because of some of the work we did with the parks groups and our regional partners to get us some funding and grants for that, plus 17 agencies in the federal and state government to help us build a fish pond bridge. So at this point, it's just up to council if they want to redirect effort to look at a new project site, or they give us a few years to get this one on the, on the books for us to figure out what to do with it in the future.
So you're not looking for an answer tonight?
I've reported back with the Rule of Four scorecard shows, and then council would make a motion if they want to add this as a Rule of Four. Right now, it's not anything other than the information that's been provided to you.
I, yeah, we're missing a few councillors at this point, and it's late at night, I would just suggest that you give us a little bit of time to think about that and bring it back.
I'll have it put on the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, but maybe with a little, yeah, a little bit more explanation of what the decision is.
Madam Mayor, it's two and a half pages long, so you all have had it in your packet now, twice. So I'd be happy to talk to you more about it the next time, and I'll put it back on the agenda, because I know it's late.
Thank you. City attorney report.
Madam Mayor, no report.
We are adjourned.